Morning, everyone. Welcome to committee hall for Tuesday, March 12th. Hafn, Qualet, Spicilic, Wisp, Homish, Awameo. Welcome to the Flooration Traditional Territory. I would like to amend the agenda to strike out item two, the committee structure discussion. There's a bit of a disconnect between me and staff about putting some meat on the bones of that discussion. So I really wanted something in writing to show the council, but it's not written. So we'll put that off till the 26th. So a motion to move the amended agenda. It's moved by Council French, taken by Council Pen Gill. All those in favor? Phil Swenson carries. All right, so that should lighten the agenda a little, since everyone's still adjusting to day. We've got lots of coffee here today. But we're starting with the most exciting conversation of the day, our financial plan. Over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott, Council, Linda Glende, CAO. I'm here with Roland Russell, financial analyst. Thank you. And Christine Matthews, of course, our CFO. So as a team, we'll be presenting the financial plan workshop for you today. This is our third workshop with council. The goals for today, we're going to review the public input. So communications, Christina Moore has compiled the feedback that was provided at the town hall with council, both verbally and in writing, as well as any feedback that we've received through our other channels. We'll review the general fund. Any changes that were incorporated at this time are substantial, so you won't get any major surprises, if any. Our capital plan, special operating projects, and our existing service level. And then we're going to talk to you about our carryforwards from 2018. And you've received some lists of the carryforwards today. They will be posted on the website. They should be already, as a matter of fact, for the public that are watching. And we'll talk you through those. And then, of course, any audience questions? Should there be any? And then following that council direction, next steps with the budget.
So, within our process, we still have a couple steps to complete. It is March. We hope to have the financial plan bylaw adopted this month. And the outcome from that would then be used to calculate our property taxes. And we would prepare the property tax bylaw for council to review in April. There is a statutory deadline for the middle of May, in which all of this needs to be completed prior to the 15th of May. We would hope to have this completed well in advance of that date. So these are the last two things on the very long list of overall budget process that are still outstanding.
So in terms of feedback, we wanted to put this up again for our audience and those watching. There is still time for people to provide feedback. Obviously, today, the email, both budget feedback in your council email, Twitter, Facebook, and our website. So the public input process, all of those channels that you saw on the previous slide are where we garner feedback, as well as the town hall that council had a few weeks ago. Both council, as you know, and staff provided their summary of the discussions they had and the things that they've heard. Themes in terms of where we heard comments multiple times are EV chargers, so electric vehicle chargers, especially at Brennan Park. People would like to see them there. And in fact, Mr. Buxton, our general manager of community planning and infrastructure, is currently working or has an application in to BC Hydro for an EV charger at Brennan Park. Boat launch, upgrade, or replacement, a sandy dump needed, especially as it relates to camping in RVs. And then transit came up. So including our regional transit, where the province is at with Uber, and promotion of handy dart services with people with disabilities to places other than, say, just downtown, maybe using some of our provincial parks if that's possible through BC Transit. Every comment, everything that we've heard from every individual is captured in an Excel spreadsheet. It is posted on the website, and council has also provided all of those comments for you to read. So I'll pass it over to council now if there's any discussion around the public input that you received. Council, any questions on what you heard, whether it's included in the budget, not included? Counsel, right?
We did have some discussion about the industrial area down adjacent to the golf course, golf clubhouse just across the street, Packer Road, sort of triangular industrial sorts. And the possibility of unlocking that, when I say unlocking, my understanding is developed is constrained by the water supply. And I don't know if staff has made any progress on how much that might be. It's apparently, I'm told, a district project whenever it happens. And I think the issue is timing. And there was some discussion, certainly from a party from there, to try to have that timing fixed. And I don't know where the district is with respect to costing that, whether we, as a council, if we thought we wanted to go ahead with that sooner rather than later, would somehow put a marker in the budget for that, assuming it would be funded by borrowing any of that whenever it does happen. And so I just didn't want to leave it hanging without some certainty around it in this process, whether it's part of this process or not part of this process.
Currently, the master plan with our infrastructure has it earlier, but we also put layers on it in terms of lining it up with other projects, urgent projects. So we have another water main project that is leaking extraordinarily. A lot of water needs repair. So we put the more urgent ones ahead when that's necessary. At this time, the project, I believe, is scheduled for 2021 through our capital projects plan. If council were to decide to change that, then the, it's not just spending more on borrowing, it's actually staff capacity to get the capital project completed. So if council were to push that ahead, it would switch the prioritization of our current capital plan. One thing that we are going to do is have economic development and engineering meet to talk about projects like this in terms of layering that additional, okay, council's rezoned industrial lands, how do we unlock it more quickly? And does that create a piece of the criteria for how the timing is planned for our capital projects? But at this time, it's not slated for 2019 or 2021.
And that discussion between economic development and engineering would occur this year?
Oh, yeah, soon. It's unlikely, given where we're at in the year in terms of tendering, and maybe Mr. Buxton wants to weigh in if I don't catch all the detail here. If council were to direct us to make it earlier, 2020 is likely the most realistic time. And if I may add, I don't want to speak on behalf of engineering, if that's even possible. So I will put that caveat out there.
Okay. But highly unlikely for this budget, so not consulting. Thank you.
Other questions about feedback? Counsel Pen Gill?
So the one thing, and it ties into the transit discussion we'll have later today, but I'm looking at some of the thoughts in terms of our planning going forward and whether we change fares or eliminate fares and bring on new vehicles, how those interplay. The one piece that I was wondering about is, we have some people suggesting we could use more parking or change our parking situation. And I think for me, those things go hand in hand. And I'm wondering, you know, if we're pacing our transit growth right for the densification we're doing. And when we think about costs, you know, how are we balancing that against, for example, the cost of needing a parking structure because we don't have enough transit? And is it, you know, when you weigh these sorts of things in, is that the more affordable way forward? And I guess where I'm going with that is, part of me wants to just say, you know, we should look for a major transit investment this year, but I'm also hesitant because it's late in the budget process, and I don't want to just throw everything that all the work that's been done out the window, which leads me to feel that I probably want to be much more aggressive next year in terms of that sort of thing. But I'm just wondering if there could be a bit of a discussion of how we're balancing those things and how we see maybe in the coming years, adapting those.
I'm sorry, for clarity, balancing what things?
Parking versus transit.
Yeah.
Parking infrastructure?
Oh.
Versus transit availability.
Right. Without having the numbers right in front of me, at this point, transit is the highest priority, as is active transportation. And parking infrastructure at this time really does not have a lot of budget behind it. The parking implementation, parking strategy implementation is ongoing. But in terms of a parcade or anything of that magnitude, a parcade is actually included in the real estate facility strategy, but a very low priority against other things.
Sorry, I can, we're in the midst right now with Gary Buck, our general manager. We're in the midst of figuring out potential locations and cost, cost per store of, and cost of a parcade structure. So we'll have some more information in the next few months. But again, that's, it's a fairly low priority, so the emphasis is really on active transportation and transit improvements. And when and if we need to build that parcade, we will be ready. So we're doing the homework, laying the groundwork, but a parcade is one of those, when you need it, you sort of have the groundwork laid, but it's not in the, even in the five-year capital plan.
I think one thing to consider around transit is, we're currently being constrained by our lack of maintenance and bus depot storage. And so even in our conversation this afternoon, there's nothing in the budget really reflected to help us expand. Or is it, is it our responsibility to acquire the land for that, or is it the operators? Like, does BC Transit have to find new space for depot? Lots of parking.
From what I understand, and my experts can weigh in, is that the operator needs to find the land, but they are hoping that it would be district land. I don't think transit. No, I know, sorry. I meant to look at Gary, not you.
Yes, that's my understanding, whether it's BC Transit or the operator. They provide, they have to find their land. They are hoping that they can find lower-cost land.
But who builds, like, the maintenance facility?
The funding for transit is broken out between operating and capital. And part of that capital is part of that building. And so at this time, BC Transit's budget has the district contributing to that capital build, which is why they brought it to council's attention. But council hasn't committed to that yet.
But it's not in our five-year plan, is it?
I don't believe so. With, not yet through the mayor. We are waiting for the real estate facility strategy to shake down before we flush out the five-year financial plan. We have a couple others, but we haven't fulsomewhere reached our five-year financial plan until that strategy comes here and gets some new space.
It's a bit of a chicken and the egg, because we're likely going to approve the budget, but our conversation this afternoon doesn't contemplate any service enhancements on the core number until 2021. No new classes, no. So it'll be a constraint.
But, yeah, it's a race. But one of the things with transit, just to counter Pen Gill's point, it's always struck me as being a little bit of a, it's never something we can do ourselves, because we have to get BC Transit on board, because they fund almost half of it. They, in turn, have to get budget allowances from their higher authorities as well. So it is a bit of a process to get these improvements, even just adding a bus or extending a route seems to have to go through this process. They have to get the budget as well as us allocating. It's never something we've been able to do all by ourselves. We can have a better discussion probably this afternoon about that, but it takes a little bit of time to get all the pieces lined up for these transit decisions, capital or operating.
It's interesting, because if you look at the transit MOU, there's nothing in there for a new facility. And yet, that's their document that they budget against and go to the problem here. So I think it's something we need to bring up, because it's not in our plan, it's not in their plan, we can't expand transit until we have that needed ability.
That's a fair point, yes.
It's concerning. All right, is there any other feedback, or feedback from the public, council? Counsel Pen Gill?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, I understand from the conversations around the boat launch that we're constrained with limited suitable land that we control as a municipality, or at least that we control directly. There's Daryl Bay, from what I understand, and I'm not sure, I don't think there's a whole lot else that we actually control. And I understand that, you know, thinking about the cost to actually build it and so on, it's not something I'd be ready to pose, you know, a capital project at this point to do that. But what is our capacity to work with the community if the community wants to raise the funds to build it and that sort of thing? Our ability to support them in, you know, this is what's available, and this is how we could work in an agreement, that kind of thing?
Through you, Mayor Elliott. One of our priorities with staff is to work with partners and leverage volunteer groups to get work done, to essentially grow our own capacity. But if I could be candid, given the work plan we have ahead of us for 2019, that someone to lead that project, and we have the community, would be challenging, and we'd have to pop someone else, which I need to.
Would it make a difference if it wasn't someone here leading it, but more just facilitating, supporting, and, you know, maybe that just doesn't make sense, practically speaking?
Yes, if it was more a volunteer group that decided to fundraise, and the district provided any kind of information that they needed in terms of the interface of the district, then it might be possible. I don't want to commit to that on the fly, but it's certainly something we could look at as a way to do this. Counsel Anderson?
I'd just like to recommend that we keep the boat launch initiative in the context of the marine action strategy implementation, because it is interrelated with other needs and with other planning. The current boat launch is used also by barges, and we don't have an alternative for barge slips either. And I just think, I just wanted to emphasize that it really does belong, and we should keep, keep the focus on marine strategy more generally.
Before we move on about the public input, Christina has provided me some notes. And Christina, this morning, is presenting a webinar on the OCP engagement, and I'm committed to that quite a while ago, and providing Kath Squamish more exposure that way. So she's provided some notes that, in terms of our interactive online tool, we had over 600 views, 100 views of the mayor's video. About 40 people attended council's meet and greet. And as mentioned, all the comments received have been posted to the website in detail. And these are the things.
So there are, for the discussion or questions around the public input at this point, we will move on to have a discussion around changes incorporated in the general fund. The changes that were incorporated in the general fund have been categorized into three areas. Within the capital plan, we included an additional project for LED street lighting conversion. That project was approved in the 2018 budget, and due to some miscommunication between engineering and finance, it was not picked up on our list for 2019. That miss was highlighted by engineering, so we've brought it back and included it. We anticipate that the project will be completed this year. In special projects, in special.
Did you mention that it's going to be surplus or present tax impact?
Oh, sorry. That project was included in the 2018 budget with direction by council that it be funded from accumulated surplus. So there is no tax impact for the additional funding that we are including in the 2019 In the special operating projects, we added a project for economic development data acquisition, which is $25,000 on an ongoing basis. We're going to commence funding that from accumulated surplus, and then as we move forward and have a better understanding of the data requirements and the longer-term costs and processes, we may come back and suggest different funding methodologies. But at this point, for 2019, we're going to, we're recommending accumulated surplus. We've added a project for Brennan Park, the ammonia condenser motor stock. And as I'm sure we're all aware, ammonia is a bit of an issue with respect to safety. So we, we need to be sure that, that this motor is replaced in a timely manner. So by adding this project, at this point, we will be able to secure a motor and have it put into service over the summer during the normal shutdown period for the, for the rink, as opposed to having to try to get one whenever and, and put it in perhaps during the season. So this is, it is an emergency replacement. We, it could have been funded through a contingency, but because the budget is not complete at this point, we determined that it would be best to simply add, this is an additional project. The cost is $10,000, slightly more than that, $10,500, and it will be funded from accumulated surplus also. The last project that was changed with the special oper, within the special operating project envelope, was an increase of $5,000 in the OCP or...
OCP.
Sorry, official community plan?
Yes.
Yes. Monitoring budget, and that will be funded through the rural dividend. So we're going to use $5,000 from that component to offset the additional cost. The OCP monitoring that we're looking for here will be addressed to a greater extent by RCA.
Thank you, Roland. This project, as you know, was originally $25,000 in the budget, and the $5,000 always was contemplated as covered by the grant. Staff have been working very hard behind the scenes on this project and had looked into several different platform providers outside of Town Folio. So in terms of procurement, did follow the process, so they got quotes and did a number of, what's the word? Not investigation, but looking into the different platforms with IT, so economic development and IT communications, looked at all kinds of different providers. So the procurement process was within our policy. Staff got quite excited about the project, and when they presented it to CLT, our, yes, go forward with this project, we will include it in the budget, was interpreted as, go forward with the project. And there is a three-year contract that has been signed with Town Folio. The first year is $7,500, offset by that five, so $2,500, and two more years of $6,500 that we are now committed to as an organization. So it was a staff mistake, so we're doing a couple here, that we have been committed to this three-year contract. The additional money in this year's contract, or sorry, this year's budget line is actually for internal purposes, so $9,500 to add staff, staff's ability to work with the data and help build up the program. So just being transparent with council that we have committed a minimum of $6,500 for the next two years. Any questions?
But on the ammonia condenser motor, given our strategic plan and so on, is this an electric motor? And if it's not, would we consider spending a bit more, given what's in our strategic plan?
It is an electric motor, and the desire is to replace it at this point. There are two motors, sorry, there are two condensers associated with the ammonia plant, so that you have redundancy. And it is crucial to have both motor, both ammonia condensers available come August, when we need to reboot the plant, put the ice back in. So replacement of the motor at this point, or budget approval, I should say, for replacement of the motor at this point, will allow that to occur over the summer season. And that's the rationale for, for including it at this time.
But in, we're sticking with electric motors, yes?
If I may add, Mayor Elliott, Camilla Say, who's our facilities manager, is extraordinarily cognizant and very passionate about reducing GHGs in our facilities, and so she always has that on her mind.
Counsel Anderson, the opponent raised?
Yes, the economic development data acquisition, does this involve additional staff time primarily, a part-time assistant, that type of thing? Or is it data purchase? What is the nature of that?
Short answer, Mayor Elliott, is it's data purchase. And we are going to keep an eye on it, and that's why Mr. Russell mentioned that we will come back to council, because the idea is that as data probably gets cheaper through the years, that we may not need quite that much. But it's data purchase at this time.
Thank you.
Counsel Reese?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what does OCP monitoring consist of? I mean, somebody sitting there watching bankmarks, or I just sort of don't really have a sense of what that is.
Yeah. So this is actually an online tool. So Town Folio is the provider of the tool, and I do have a picture of it, I'll pull up in a second. And they scrape the data from the district and then put it into their website and have different indicators. And they work with staff to align those indicators with the OCP monitoring that we are doing, or, sorry, that is listed in the OCP. Now, there are 30 of them in the OCP, but we're going to start small. We won't have all 30 on there. And then in addition, using the economic development data, there will be an entirely separate economic development page that will be useful for that area of our business. So it's essentially a service that takes our open data and puts it in a tool and then demonstrates our, our numbers. So the data is where the staff work comes in, so that $9,500 to build, build out the data, buy the data, so we have it available.
And then the result of that is, we get information through this post-urinary analysis program, whether we're meeting goals, not meeting goals, trends, that kind of thing?
Well, at this point, it would be more about baselining. So it's not a tool, you can compare, it is actually, you can compare the district to other cities using this tool. And then the idea is with the numbers, is that staff will start to optimize based on those numbers. But we are in the initial stages. So this year, it's about getting the numbers, getting the visual that both staff and the public can look at. And then in future years, staff will dig into those numbers and how do we optimize our service. So Public Works currently does that with their system. They look at the numbers and their relativity to other communities, and then they optimize. So how do we improve, say, our leakage out of water? But yeah, it's at the very early stages. And I do have a visual for you that I can pull up in a second. It's pretty small for public, but I'll pass this around. This is a very brief visual of, say, the livability priority in the OCP, the section, and then the difference. and then the different boxes. So, there's percent of annual residential unit growth, percent of households spending more than 30% on housing, rental housing starts as a percentage of total. So, this is the livability section, and then you can click and dig down into more and get graphs and visuals.
Counselor Bingham?
I may be getting too technical here, but just so I understand, the live Folio we're paying, and am I sure that's the name?
TownFolio.
TownFolio. We're paying for two things. One, we're buying data about other communities for comparison purposes, and then the other service we're getting is they are extracting our own data, analyzing it and then putting it in a portal so we can compare. And at this point, there's maybe some scraping and stuff, but over time, they will move to leveraging our open data directly, is that kind of the...
Yeah, Mayor Elliott, if I can clarify, the data acquisition program, project with economic development is separate and apart, although may inform TownFolio. So, what TownFolio does is they have a website and they work with, every city that's on their website is a city that they're working with, and they collect that data from those cities, however they do it. They collect our data from us, and then the comparisons are based on their analytics. The data acquisition through economic development are those things that will further inform economic development as well as TownFolio, so there'll be a little bit of overlap, but that's sort of a bigger project around getting data from Census Canada, like all kinds of different entities where currently you have to buy the data to inform economic development strategy and implementation. Is that clarified?
Ms. Anderson, do you have a question? You're, you're raising your hand.
Well, I think I might have missed my opportunity, it was concerning the budget feedback, and I'm happy to come back to you later. All right. Well, we, we had a couple of persons provide input concerning the active transportation plan, and my specific question is the, the, the issue of sidewalks at the south end of Second Avenue, that is on Vancouver Street. And the, the submitter brings up the point that this is a truck route, and so my question is, and we can come back to it in case this information needs to be retrieved, but what does the active transportation plan have to say about sidewalk improvements in that area on that Vancouver Street truck route? It would seem to me that sidewalks could be a solution to discourage the parking problem we sometimes have, say, at the corner of Third and Vancouver. But the, the, our, our, the plan to restore sidewalks at the south end of Second Avenue, people are forced to walk on a road, Vancouver Street, which is also a truck route. So, that's the question. What is the, where do improvements there fit into our active transportation plan, work plan at this time?
That's an answer we'll have to bring back to council once I have a chance to speak to them.
So, the, the third component of changes that were incorporated in the pact that you have was a change in the calculation that taxes impacted the existing service levels. And at the request of the CFO, we reviewed the allocations that were currently included in the model, and we noted that there was a discrepancy between the allocations as used in 2018 and 2019. We believe that this was perhaps an anomaly of a changeover in financial system. And upon that review, we went back and we were able to determine that the calculations were not consistent year over year, and so we adjusted the 2019 calculation so that it was consistent with the methodology used in 2018 and prior years. And as a result of that, the allocations from the general fund to water and sewer increased, and that resulted in a reduction in the tax impact of $65,000.
That seems like a good...
That's kind of what we thought, too. Good.
Utilities one, thank you for checking that.
So, those were the changes that, that have been incorporated at this point, and we've provided additional information on that in the package that was, was sent out, and we're going to speak specifically about the results as, as they look now from these changes that we've incorporated. I will pause at this point, because it appears that Counselor Reese has a question?
He does. Go ahead.
So, with that allocation, so it's allocated instead to one or two of the utilities, but within the utility, is there capacity to absorb that? Because we've already set the utility rate.
Yes, there is. And what, what's occurred is, there is no need to change the utility rates or the utility revenues, because within the utilities, there was going to be a transfer of funds to reserves, okay? So, there, there was a great, there was a slight surplus, I should say, of revenue over expenses, and that was going to be transferred to reserves. And that's part of an ongoing plan within the utilities to increase the reserve contributions. So, at this point, we're going to reduce the reserve contribution this year to reflect the increase in the allocations. So, in future years, if it is determined that we should reset that reserve contribution at a higher level, then yes, it would impact, it could, I should say, not would, it could impact future rates. But for 2019, it's being absorbed within the current utility rates.
Mr. Roland, if councils have questions about specific line items in the special projects or capital projects or the general fund, or if they want to ask questions about carryforward, is now the time to do it, or would you prefer that they wait?
Mayor Elliott, I'd prefer that they wait. We have some context to provide around the carryforwards, and then if council wants to ask questions about the whole list, that would be favorable.
But the capital funds, special projects, you want us to wait on that as well?
Uh, no, that does not happen.
Okay. So, counselors, do you have any questions at this time on capital plans, special projects, general fund, that you would like to ask staff at this point? I've got Counselor Stoner and then Counselor Bingham?
Just a quick clarifying question. My recollection from the Intervent Management Plan is that we're putting $4 million aside per year, $2 million from tax, and then $2 million from grant, but in the general fund, I'm only seeing $2 million.
The balance, Mayor Elliott, the balance of that amount is in the carryforward, because we are carryforward, we can spend it all this year.
Counselor Bingham?
Just on the LED conversions, my understanding is we've done some, and are we far enough along, if that's correct, are we far enough along to have a sense of whether or not we're seeing the, the expected longevity and maintenance and those sorts of benefits?
This, Mayor Elliott, this has been a multi-year project. In terms of the outcomes and seeing the results, I don't have that information from me right now, I don't know that Mr. Buxton does either.
No, I don't know that we have seen anything. No, we haven't done the data analysis on the utility expenditures to know what impact it has. We are probably about, let's see, less than halfway through replacing the fixtures. We have purchased them, so they're sitting in storage waiting to get installed, so hence the reason we're going to finish it off. And then we'll look at our utility accounts to see what impact that has had.
We'll say anecdotally, we've had a lot of positive feedback from the community in terms of better visibility and a better form of life, but yeah, we haven't done math yet from what we've seen, although the business case for doing this was quite attractive.
And that data will be provided to council later.
So, I've got Counselor Anderson and then Counselor Reese?
I think my question is on the carryforward item. It is one that I believe has been carried forward over a few years now, and that is Crown Grant Surveying. I missed it during our budget sessions as to draw it out, but it seems that this has been pushed, well, delayed over a number of years now. And so, I, I believe this is in the nature of about $20,000 for Crown Grant surveys in the State Department.
We're going to hold on to carryovers for a moment, because CL want to provide some context, so we'll hold that question. Counselor Reese, questions on general fund, capital, and special projects?
Well, it was just to the point about the links and provide a little bit of history about that, because council last term made the decision to accelerate the program. Staff, I think, I can remember exactly a three or four-year program to replace these, and we, I think, pushed it into two years, if I recall correctly. Many of them we shortened the period of time and accelerated it. And that was an expectation that the business case would prove it to be profitable, the result is, for that to come out, but that was sort of where that all came from.
One of the things that I wanted to check in with council was just on the budget around council, their conference budget and training budget. And one of the things we've noticed over the years is that if counselors want to attend the FCM Sustainability Conference as well as UVCN, is that they go over budget, which requires them, other counselors, to not use their capital funds. And I wonder if it makes sense to increase that allotment slightly so that at least two counselors a year can go to the FCM Sustainability Conference or the FCM Mothership Conference? So, there's two, there's the general resolution session, but then also there's the Sustainability Conference. And I know in the past, counselors have really enjoyed attending that, because it does help in sort of furthering the conversation and the learning around sustainability issues. So, council, I don't know if you have any appetite to increase your own budget slightly. I'm not suggesting that everyone should go to FCM, but there are things for us to learn across the country, and it is helpful. Counselor Reese?
Where is our budget number now? I'm going to guess it's around $4,000 or $5,000.
It's, it's $4,000 for a counselor, and then the mayor has $10. So, there's certainly room in my budget for me to do that, but I don't think I should be the only one that is, is able to attend these conferences, I'm feeling like I'm not tipping the scales or requiring other people to give up on their travel. So, you know, if we designated different people this year to, to look at attending that conference, I think it's worthwhile. Counselor...
Would that be, that increase be done as potentially a pool, letting figure out who accesses that, or would be rather than a blanket increase?
Yes, I, I think it's incremental to the whole pool, and then each year, two counselors get to take advantage of that increase. And I think it would be, I'm guessing, about a $3,000 lift.
Robin, would that be right?
Probably around that. And, and Pritha, I just want to take you at a little bit of context, there is a policy as well, and it, the allocation and the policy is $4,000 each, the mayor $2,000. And previously, the different councils have had different philosophies about use it or lose it, or mix and match, or share, and so it allows for council to make motions as to, you know, if I have leftover money, someone wants to go to something, that's a motion, and that's, that's why it's done by policy as opposed to by bylaw. And I do, I do have a spreadsheet that indicates what everybody has spent so far, like on newly-elected. And I can, I think Mayor Elliott has a copy as well, I can pass it around so that everybody can sort of see where you're at, or what's been spent, and get some context as well to, to...
So, generally, the council member went to UVCN and the FCM Sustainability Conference, they were about $1,500 over their budget.
That's right.
Sustainability Conference this year is in Newfoundland, which is a big ask. So, that's why I thought if we added $3,000, that would cover the, the two counselors that want to attend. Counselor Bingham?
And I think I've asked this before, but I'm sorry, I can't recall where our council contingency is at, and I'm wondering if, if, you know, just sort of see that as the place where that money is.
We budget $50,000 for council contingency, and generally, it is used for unforeseen community asks, rather... Rob, shake your head. Definitely gets used for that.
Yep.
So, it's up to council, I'm just putting it out there, hey, I've got enough budget to go, so I could just selfishly go, you're on your own. I just wanted to raise the issue in case there's interest, since climate and the environment is leading council, right?
Yeah, and I generally agree with that concept of, I guess, getting counselors involved more in issues just outside of our community, and even outside of UVCN, I think there's value to that. So, I, I would be happy with, I mean, round numbers, it's kind of going into a sort of approval situation, which, you know, some years we'll use and some years we might not use, just take it for $4,000 or $5,000 for council, just for a round number.
Counselor French?
For whatever it's worth, I have a high level of confidence that I won't be using the full amount allocated for me, just due to work constraints, and I'd be happy to have any unused portion of mine put into a pool for use by others who have more flexibility to travel than I do.
Counselor Smith?
Sure. I would, I would feel the same way, that the pooling is an approach I'd support. I had a question, though, is the FCM Policy Conference also in Newfoundland this year? Are they...
No, I think it's in Vechsley.
In Vechsley, thank you.
Counselor Reese?
Yeah, no, it's just to Counselor French's point, because I'd also, in the past years, I've used mine, and somehow it gets swept around, and I think it's, for me, it's just more a matter of kind of creating a pool, and maybe going a step further and encouraging counselors to actually go to some of these things, which I don't know that they've really done in the past, it's been more the counselor kind of saying, can I go? And is there one available? So, I think it's a bit of a different philosophy as well to try to reach out beyond our border a little bit.
Counselor Frank?
Well, having not gone through a whole calendar or budget year with this, I'm relying on, on the mayor's thoughts really, as, as we've seen this, as you've seen this happen previously. But I will say that the, the one session I've been to, I found to be very valuable, and I think if we, our community expects us to be pushing and leading, and that's, those are the sorts of places where we need to be to, to, I guess, have our voice heard, but also to hear what's, what's happening and where the other successes are in the country, in province and country. So, I'm supportive of an increase if that's what we end up needing. Maybe we need to have a specific discussion about what everyone's year looks like and actually view our current funding as a, potentially as a pool, which I believe, maybe we, maybe we're there, but I, I feel like it should be something that maybe is at least, at least increasing with inflation and everything else, just so we, we stand a chance of meeting that even inside the context of, of the general pooling of those. In that way, when someone, if someone was to go over that we, one person was consuming a lot of that fund, we know that we've had a discussion about it, and that's a, one or two counselors just doing more than the others, but we, we're on the same page as to the hows and the whys of that would be, yeah.
So, I've heard leave it the same, I've heard increase it by $1,000 for counselor. Counselor Bingham?
I throw a third option on the table.
You have heard, yeah, you have heard take it from contingency if we need it?
So, just hearing the discussion, I mean, it strikes me that giving each couns... So just hearing the discussion, I mean, it strikes me that giving each Counselor their individual amount is maybe necessary if the Counsel isn't getting along, if one Counsel is collaborating, maybe it makes sense to pull it back to 3,000 or 2,500 per Counselor, the remainder in the pool and as a group we decide how to allocate that pool. And I think that's basically what Counselor Herbert was talking about and so we're maybe not increasing the aggregate amount, but there's then that capacity for a portion of Counselor to tend to move things. I do think they're really valuable and I'm also wanting to be conscious of how much we're spending.
Okay, so I'm not gonna put forward a motion. I put it out there as an idea, so if there's a Counsel that wants to move this forward, I'll leave that up to you.
If, if we wanted to decide as a group that we want, that we were to pool or do a hybrid, which I think is what Counselor Petty is proposing, some sort of, this is how much we get, the rest goes in the pool, we figure, we figure it out as a group. I'm trying to figure out how we'd capture that in a motion, but I do think we need an overall, an overall increase would be appropriate. But not, I don't know if the amount, the adding $1,000 for Counselors, a 25% increase isn't aggressive, but yeah, any thoughts on how?
Have to start again.
It may be more fully formed this time, but yeah, I'm not sure how to, how to approach that.
I think it is important to have each Counselor to have a set minimum that they know is theirs to enjoy for their own benefit and learning. So if you do L M L G A and then U B C M, so if you follow your resolution from May into the fall at U B C M, your budget's done, which means you can't attend Civ X and if you want to go to F C M, you've got to make sure that someone else hasn't done L M L G A and U B C M in order to afford you the ability to go to F C M. So, and that is okay some years and in years where there's big issues that are at U B C M or L M L G A or a particularly interesting conference at F C M, it gets a little bit trickier if you want to attend. So, so I think, I think generally the way that we've worked the last four years is just, we understood that some Counselors wouldn't use their budgets. Counselor Lee's been one of them. Counselor Kent never used his entire budget and so other Counselors benefited from that. I just wanted to try and make it a little bit more sort of transparent and encourage people to be okay with traveling to F C M, that they didn't have to feel like they were making someone else step back in order for them to, to take advantage of that conference. So that was my only intent in bringing this forward and if that's a $500 increase or a thousand, I'm not sure. Counselor Stoner and then Counselor Race?
Yeah, I think the proposed approach from Mayor is a good one. I appreciate having a certain amount earmarked for individuals and then whether it's the F C M Sustainability Conference, there are others, I know U B C has one that's on the conference. We have some really big pieces in our strategic plan. I think it's important to continue to reach out to different communities and learn from what those best practices are. And having a pool of money there to allocate between us when we feel like there's a necessity there, I think is really worthwhile.
Counselor Race?
Yeah. And I agree with that and I think the system we've had, apart from the dollar amount over the past few years, it is a bit of an honor system. And it seems to work fairly well. We allocate surpluses amongst people that aren't using it and so forth and seem to accommodate most needs and I don't recall anybody really abusing that system. So with that in mind and the fact that we will be able to review this on an annual basis in any event, I'll just move to increase the allotment from four to $5,000 per Counselor.
Everybody want to second that? Second for discussion somewhat reluctantly for Ms. Pegg. I think you've got rich blood there. Do you want to speak to Counsel Pegg?
Yeah, I guess I am a little bit hesitant about the amount. I, I guess I'm seeing this as a bit of a test and in, you know, because we can review it each year, I'm assuming that there will be an opportunity to carry forward the monies if they aren't spent. And so I don't see any of us looking to, you know, each one of us max that out. I think we're all fairly budget conscious, so it is a, I guess, a small and thus not very risky experiment, but I think worthwhile taking because I do see the value in these programs.
So how, how long has it been at 4,000 as we contemplate an increase?
Forever? I don't know. Yeah, forever. It's never been. Not last term, it didn't, so sometime before that. I don't know.
Counselor Race, you can go back further than that last year.
I think around 2011 is when it went from three to four.
That was a huge, that was a huge increase.
Yeah.
Percentage wise.
So a $500 increase gives the $3,000 that I was contemplating, a $1,000 increase gives a $6,000 profit.
Well, so I, also with, Counselor Stoner's mentioned other, other opportunities that you, you fit the highlights and Counselor Stoner touched on the housing one. There's what, there's other things with community forests. There's things that we're, that we can be learning and doing better. So I think that, yeah, I'll be supportive of this with knowing that we're gonna come back to next, you know, next budget and, and see where, see where we're at and see if it was just something that we ended up spending and if we needed to do that. But I don't expect us to all take a leap in, in, you know, we're not talking about conferences in the Caymans. So, you know, an extra hotel room.
Find your luxury.
Yeah, yeah, an extra two nights at a conference in Mission or something. It's, yeah, it's, okay. I'm, I'll be supportive of this.
All right. Counselor French?
So like my friend, Counselor Petty, I'm a little hesitant, but having heard that it's been a few years since there was an increase and it is a relatively small amount, I'll support the increase.
Any other comments? Counselor Ashley?
Yes, the, the one that sticks out for me that raises the cost is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. But we have one particular theme that's of real importance over our term and that is harbor maintenance. And I just, my suggestion is that we think strategically about how to use that forum and that, for example, reflecting on chamber experience, it's expensive to attend national provincial chamber events, but thinking strategically and planning and making sure you're following to take, to know how to take advantage of the process is important. But let's think strategy and we do have a big piece in federal monies for harbor maintenance.
Do you support any motion?
Yes, I will be.
Okay, thanks. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Stoner and Mayor Elliott opposed. Okay, so we'll increase that budget by $1,000 per Counselor.
Thank you. And not the Mayor.
Not the Mayor.
Okay, continuing on. This slide just outlines the results of the tax impact of new initiatives. In fairness, there are no changes in the tax impacts of the new initiatives that we are planning for or that we have included in the budget. This, these numbers are the same as the numbers that you have seen previously. An overall change year over year of 1.8% for new initiatives.
Counselor Race?
Thank you. Could you go back to that slide, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So it's the capital projects. This is capital projects funded from taxation as opposed to borrowing and so forth.
This is the tax impact of 2019 capital in comparison to 2018. It's gone down by $166,000 year over year.
And that, if I understand it correctly, is kind of reversing a trend where we've been trying to increase that amount year over year. The amount of monies we take from taxation and put into capital expenses over the operating budget effect. I'm just wondering if you can comment on that. Is there a reason that we're going down as opposed to up or at least even staying the same?
Yes. In 2019, the special projects budget year over year has increased from a value of approximately $600,000 to its current impact of just under $900,000. So it's gone up by about $280,000. So if you look at it from one perspective, capital's gone down by 170, operating's gone up by 280. So there's an offset there. Between the two of them, there's an increase of $100,000 roughly. Part of that is the result of more diligence on behalf of the Finance Department in conjunction with the Engineering Group to determine where the project should fall from a financing perspective, whether it will be considered a capitalizable project, i.e. are we gonna get an asset out of this? Some of the projects that had been historically funded as part of the capital plan, for example, upon further reflection, don't meet our capitalization criteria and therefore should be considered special projects and operating and funded from the operating dollars. So part of the shift that you're seeing in this year is reflecting greater scrutiny of the actual projects and the nature of the projects to ensure that we're making that change at the front end as opposed to at year end coming back and saying, oh, this is not a capital project, this is an operating project. They're making the change at that point. So that's part of the change that we're seeing in this, this year specifically.
We'll go to the next slide.
Mayor Elliott, for clarity, I believe Counselor Race is also asking about contribution to reserve as part of our capital plan, not just paying for projects. And does this affect that? Is that the question as well?
Well, I guess, if I might, the, I was sort of looking at the overall trend. Past several years, we've been trying to increase the amount of capital we contribute towards out of the operating budget. And so I was just, and I take Mr. Russell's point. I mean, if you look at the sort of the bigger picture, maybe we're not going down like I just said. Maybe we might do allocate one against the other, but just sort of the overall picture for the budget this year, are we kind of maintaining that trend? Have we leveled off or are we going down? And it would include everything to the C A R's point.
Thank you, Sir the Mayor. Basically, we're staying the same. We did have a conversation in the last workshop about some shift. Just to be clear, we do actually check every year for capital, but this year there were some projects that after coming to the first in, or as we were coming out to Counsel, we realized there were some over there that were probably maintenance oriented capital projects. So they're improving our infrastructure, so still maintaining our capital, still part of the capital rehabilitation envelope, but they did, from an accounting, purely accounting perspective, we would not consider them capital when it comes to financial statements. So we did shift about the same amount. So I would say we're in a steady state. Essentially, we kept capital and investment towards our capital assets level from an operating perspective and we maintained the same reserve contribution.
So with that, I'd like to move to the next slide. So in this slide, we're outlining the changes in the existing service level, the base. So we, in 2018, we have a tax, a general property tax requirement of 27.7 million. Adjustments made to that in 2019 reflect net labor changes of 1.25 million, contract changes of just under a quarter million. And it is in the last slide, other existing service level adjustments. That number reflects an increase in revenue stream from processes, increased development fees, et cetera, that transpired from one year to the next. That is the line that was impacted by the additional $65,000 in allocations. So that's why we're seeing the slight impact or a slight tax reduction. So this number now, in the previous iteration that was presented at the end of January, the value of existing service level change was 1.34 million and now it's come down slightly to 1.28 million. So it's, again, a change of $65,000. So that brings it down slightly on a percentage basis, I believe from 4.7% to 4.6%.
Mayor Elliott, if I might, just for the public that might be tuning in that haven't seen this before, the net labor change includes things like annualization of positions that were approved last year that were pool rated, increase in contracts for unions, our C M P budget, sorry, wage increases as well. So that's where you see that impacting and perhaps our CFO wants to add.
Yeah, I'll just remind Counsel too that we have a couple of the changes passed down to us from other governments. Our municipal, our medical services plan impacts that number as well as the one-third Counsel change where we had to pick up the extra to make sure you guys stay whole. So there's a couple of different initiatives in there as well. In past years, we used to reflect a lot of the allocations of staff away from the general fund as a net number and under our new systems, they're shown separately. So you're seeing the full gross up of labor before any allocation through those traditions. And also our labor budget is about 20 million, so it's probably, what is it, about a 2% change on labor or something, 2, 3% change. So it's kind of, it's, in the big budget, it's not 4.5%, but against revenue, it's, or it's a revenue metric that we're using.
Okay. Counselor Pegg?
Just the, the service level term always throws me a bit and if I understand correctly, what we're actually looking at is the cost of service. And because, you know, services change, so it's pretty hard to sort of say service increase or decrease by X percent. But this number is the, the change of what we're paying for service and you know, that, that does encompass things like inflation and that sort of thing. Is that correct?
Yes, of course.
For clarity, when we talk about the existing service level, these are the same services we provided in the past. If we had any nondiscretionary lists like contractual changes or things that would maintain that, then they're included in our existing service level. If there's any new staffing or new initiatives introduced, then those are provided to you as a service level change, or something.
Yeah, Fred?
So in summary, we see that the inclusion of the existing service level or service level changes in total, the changes in special projects, capital projects and existing service levels, total of all of those is 1.8 million dollars or just under that, which equals 6.4% increase in the total revenue requirement, change in total revenue requirement between 2018 and 2019. We estimate that there will be tax revenue, an increase in tax revenue from growth of just under $800,000. And the result of that combination, those combinations of factors will be an estimated increase in tax revenue, which will be required from our existing tax base of just under a million dollars. So 986,000, as it's depicted here, and that equates to 3.6% increase in tax revenue. There's a caveat at the bottom, which is noted, that that is not directly translatable. that that is not directly translatable into an individual tax increase on a specific property. It is the increase overall in revenue, anticipated increase overall in revenue required year over year. And the actual impact on an individual property will vary depending on that property's change in assessment and also changes in property classes and overall changes in assessment and the composition thereof. So that's our best estimate. But if your personal taxes on your home goes up by more or less than that number, please don't be surprised. That wraps up our summary or story of the 2019 component of the budget. And at this point, I'd like to stop. There are some additional questions at this point. Otherwise, we will move on to carry forward.
Councilor Race?
Is the, is the second roll finalized now? Is that number that you've got, the current number?
Through the mayor, no, it's not. We usually receive that very last week of March or early April for the revised roll. We have to complete the rolling.
Councilor Pegg?
So that 3.6, I mean, my understanding is there's different sort of numbers for inflation, but inflation, give or take, is maybe 2%-ish. So we're fairly close to inflation, a little bit above. Is that an accurate assessment?
I believe the answer to that is yes.
Through the mayor, probably CPI is running about 2%, but I think we'd always argue that generally CPI is not always a good metric for in this body, construction indices and things like that are all more relevant to us. So I would say it's probably a little bit over inflation.
Any other general questions?
Let's talk about carry forwards.
Okay, so, breathe out, take a deep breath, and move on to step two in our discussion today or phase two of our discussion today, which are the 2018 carry forward budgets. So for 2018, we've provided you with some project listings and this highlight of the project listings that you have. The 2019 capital plan has just under $25 million in total, of which $15 million plus is related to the general fund and $9 million approximately is related to utilities. The 2018 carry forward amount is $18.3 million, this is outlined up there. And by combining those two numbers, that brings our total proposed 2019 capital budget to $43 million, okay, in total.
You going to go into some detail on that, Mr. Russell?
And we will provide additional context with respect to that shortly. In 2019, our special projects for 2018, as presented, are $1.75 million. And in 2018, projects that have not been completed, that are still required, there's approximately $1 million of additional spending that we would like to carry forward to 2019. So with that summary, we'll provide some additional context with respect to the individual pages that you were provided this morning. For the general fund, the carry forward is approximately $11 million. There are four large projects that are being carried forward with a total value of just under $8 million. Those four projects, as outlined on the screen, make up over 70% of the total amount that's being carried forward. The total remaining projects relate to the other $3.2 billion. Pause at this point. If there are any questions with respect to general fund carry forwards, this would be an opportunity to ask them. Yes. Okay. I've been asked to address a commentary around the nature of carry forwards. A number of the projects that we have, for example, Pioneer Way as an example, and a number of the other projects that are remaining are multi-year projects. It is not anticipated that we would complete the project in a single year. So carrying forward a portion of the budget is generally anticipated. The total value of carry forwards this year appears to be quite high. And in some instances, with relation to specific projects, it is higher than normal. But in some instances, there are rationales, obviously, for why projects did not complete. So I might add a caveat, for example, the CN rail crossing, safety improvements. This is a million-dollar project between carrying our budget on an annual basis. The timing of that project is based on when hourly it gets to the top of CN's stack of commitments. So we need to be prepared to go into this project and have funding available when the project reaches CN, top of CN's list. And they would probably notify us, I'm going to say what, Gary, maybe a year in advance if we were fortunate, that we had reached that level. So that's a project that we carry forward every year. But realistically, we don't know when they're going to say, "We're going to repair that rail crossing." So we really don't have a lot of choice. There are a number of projects that are of that type of nature. You'll see more, I think, when I'm on the utility slide, which comes next. At this point, I'll open this for questions. I see that Gary has joined us here at clarity as required.
Councilor Race?
So with, for example, the CN number of $1 million, when would we fund that and what was the source of funds? So have we approved borrowing from some years back when this first hit the budget? Did we approve borrowing at that time? Has it ever been part of a borrowing bylaw or is there some other, did we put money into a reserve? Or how would we deal with the actual funding of that?
The funding of this in 2019, we're contemplating funding it from accumulated surplus. The portion that relates to the district's component, which is, I'm going to say, 20%. We're anticipating that CN would fund the other 20, the other 80%. So this is the total value of the project. It is not the total value of the district's share of the cost, okay? And when this comes about, yes, in likelihood, we would borrow. There's a very reasonable possibility that we would borrow the money. But we have not gone forward with a borrowing bylaw because at this stage, we're not sure when CN's going to come forward and ask for completion of the project. So we would not go out to borrow in advance of a project such as this.
Through the mayor, I'll just add to that. We actually aren't reflecting borrowing in our capital plan. And as consequently, the ministry wouldn't allow us to borrow any. So we would need to come back with an amendment or an additional financial plan, future financial plan that we were going to borrow. In the past, we have planned to spend this through our own reserves or through our direct taxation piece for our portion.
So the allocation from the accumulated surplus then just allows us more or less to balance out the expenditure, the source of funding in the interim until we get to that final moment when we actually have to write the check. And then we can decide whether we want to borrow, fund it from some other, like accumulated surplus or whatever.
On the state, sorry.
Yeah, through the mayor. If we were spending it this year, we'd probably accumulate surplus. That's what's reflected in the budget and that's what we would be doing. We're just banking on the fact that we wouldn't do this unless CN's bringing us a portion of the funding that we need to do it. And one of the reasons we do that is we don't want to tax if we don't need to and if that doesn't come to fruition. There was probably a small component of it a few years ago when it was a smaller project that was taken from taxation, but that's been rolled into accumulated surplus and is waiting to be added to this.
Councilor Pegg?
With these kind of items, you know, if it doesn't happen for 10 years, the price will presumably go up over 10 years. Do we automatically build that into our numbers? So that the expected cost is just automatically increasing by whatever inflationary number we think is appropriate or?
So through the mayor, we actually, we actually request that our engineers put forward their budgets every year. So as they carry it forward, they would be looking at whether the cost still represented the cost of the project.
What amount of the carry forward did we tax for in 2018?
I would need to go poll something to find that out. And I'm not sure in 2018 we did. It's, we've had this project on the books for a little while in terms of small, and we have done portions of the project in the past.
You know, carry forward always piques my interest because I know we have some projects that are ongoing. But I also get concerned that we overestimate our capacity to deliver work. And so we're taxing it a year and then not delivering. So we're unnecessarily inflating our request if we can't actually get projects done. Pioneer Way extension, have we spent any money against that budget in 2018?
Yes.
So to me, that's a good example of why did we put it in the budget? I realize it's DCC funded. But it still creates an overall picture of resources required. And if we're allocating resources anticipating that project, then what didn't we do because this project didn't go ahead? What did we do? And so I'm just trying to figure out how we make this transparent to council and to the public about what did we tax for that we didn't spend? And is that a reasonable amount? Understanding that some of these projects are multi-year. But also, are we sure that we're just budgeting to our current capacity? So that we're not overpromising and underperforming? And this number just seems very high this year.
I would, in commentary with respect to the 2018 values, they are a little higher than normal, okay? Spending in 2018 was about 50% of the capital, overall capital budget. Historically, the district has been spending about 2/3, so around 65% as opposed to the 50% in 2018. And year over year, it may fluctuate a number of years. At the higher end, it's 75% to 80%. And then some years, due to extenuating circumstances, it comes in around 50%, which it did in 2018.
Mayor Elliot, I can add to that and just probably repetitively though, the reason for the public that we don't ever spend 100% is that the multi-year projects are reflected in the first year and then carried forward. This year, one of the extenuating circumstances was a gap in our capital projects manager with engineering, which was anomalous. And yes, looking at a lens on are we taking on too much in terms of our capacity is something that is a point absolutely well taken. And that lens will be applied as we move forward with our staffing capacity.
Councilor Hefner?
Along that same, along that same line, I was curious as, as different, you've had a change in council and strategic, in a strategic plan. And we've heard that some of the work, some of the, yes, we can do that, but we can't do that. We have to shuffle some work. At what point does something get shuffled enough times it just comes out of this? If we've budgeted for it, is it something that's not, whether it's no longer a priority or something else covers it off? Or how does that, does something like that happen?
Mayor Elliot, through you. It's rare that we would look at something and after a number of years not putting it in necessarily take it out because usually it's on there because it's important. If it's a special project related to a strategic plan, it's no longer relevant and then we would take it out. So that's our criteria around master planning priorities, council strategic plan, community needs.
Then I have a specific, there's some in here, some money's in here about the floodplain quantitative risk assessment. And we just see that last week. I was just curious what that, what that is.
The invoice will be dated 2019, so the work is done. We have to pay for it this year.
Right, okay.
Question, Council Race?
It's a good example.
That was sort of my question because just to kind of get a feel for these things, when we look at, for example, the drainage dike, 3.7 million, there's a significant diking project that we're just about to start. Now, we budgeted for it, I think, last year. Probably signed the contract last year, I'm guessing. But it commits us to pay. So we actually record the carryover as being the unspent money. Contract might be issued, rebound of the contract. But as the work progresses, we're going to have interim payments. And that's when we actually record the payment, not back when we sign the contract.
Correct.
So with that one, for example, we're committed to 3.7. We don't have any choice. It's just that we haven't written the check yet because the work hasn't been done.
So there's a host of factors too. With the drainage and diking projects, sometimes we're applying for grants and they have to see it represented in our financial plans for us to be successful. We have to be able to come to the table with that portion. We have a few of those in this year too. If we don't get the grant, that money's going to sit because we don't have the other funding source for it, right? So there are a number of aspects that fall into carry forwards. We certainly hear what council's saying. I think staff have been saying the same thing. We need to get better at this. And I think we're going to look at this more in 2019 in terms of what kind of policies, when do we carry, when don't we? It's already been discussions that we've been having. But in this particular year, we do have a couple of anomalies. The first line item is a key example. You don't necessarily know that you're going to have a real estate acquisition, but you have to have the expenditures available if you wanted to negotiate and go into that auction. So there are some, and we try to not impact taxation when we're building in those expenditure contingencies to ensure that it's not impacting tax, but that we still are legally able to expand when a good opportunity or something that we need. Or we know that something might be coming down the pipe. So there are a couple of those in there. The CN crossing is a prime example. We believe we'll get funding, but we don't always know. But we want to be ready if we get that opportunity. We want to be ready to jump on it and use that funding. I can't speak to Pioneer Way, maybe you can.
Pioneer Way is probably the one. There are probably one or two where it was workload related, this being one of them. And consequently, we've scheduled this year, I'm going to do the design work and then that will mostly get spent in 2020 when construction starts. So we're alive to that issue. So between that and the downtown entrance, so those are the only two that I can see that was, that were really sort of workload-driven. The Rastosma multi-year projects, the drainage dike one, we're probably going to see that sort of carryover, maybe not that much every year because it's a multi-year, it's a multi-year project. There's no other way around that.
Just for clarity though, we do actually budget multi-year. We request our engineers to budget multi-year so that they put in, you know, in what they think they're going to do. In this case, we have two major grants on the annual drainage diking that we're hoping to leverage in the next year. So they were carrying forward to make sure they had enough money to be able to leverage both of those grants. And in fact, we have in the past had some land acquisition pulled up some of those types of projects. So there's a, there's a number of variety of issues that sometimes can force a carry forward that are outside staff's control or that were planned and strategically done to facilitate opportunities.
Councilor Stiller?
So I'm going to go back to my question with regards to flood protection upgrades. And in the 2019 budget, we're sitting at 2 million. Is this the carryover that you're speaking about in terms of from 2018 over to 2019? So that puts us at 5.7 technically for the 2019 budget. But when you're looking at an overall five-year period, that doesn't actually get us to that overall level that was proposed in the flood hazard management plan because we've just reduced our 2019 budget by $2 million, supplemented by reduced our 2019 budget by $2 million, supplemented by carryover.
So do you want to speak to this or do I? Because Mr. Rolston did come in and talk, I believe, to council about the plan for the next little while in terms of the dicking. I'll carry on and you can interrupt me if I'm incorrect, but my understanding is that they are planning to do two and two every year from here on in, but they are relying heavily on grants, which technically under our financial planning isn't ideal, but that's, they have two levels in their master planning, assuming that if we can get the granting, we'll go at the 4 million level. If we can't get the granting, then it'll slide back to the 2 million and we'll carry on on our maintenance program.
So I'm just going to clarify again, in the 2019 budget, there's only $2 million for flood protection upgrades, no grants. There's no current taxation dollars towards flood hazard.
Correct. And through the mayor, we actually always borrow dicking because it's such a large value. So we don't ever actually assume taxation for our dicking line. It's usually borrowing on grant funded.
There's no debt funding either. I'm sorry, there's no debt funding either.
I believe because we're carrying it.
Because of grants.
So you're correct, the budget doesn't reflect a 4 million investment, it reflects a 2 million investment that may or may not happen, and that we have almost 4 million to carry. So Counselor Stoner is saying, aren't we falling behind when we do that?
And then it comes to a work plan issue of how much. They do have two major grants coming down for this big project.
Yes, the work, like the budget, the work, like the budget will be cyclical. We may do more than, we carry, we may do more than 4 million in one year if we can get those contracts rolling.
I'm all on that for a minute.
I'm all on it. And to be frank, I think the engineering, if you were willing to give them 8 million for dicking, we'd take it, but they're also always trying to balance the capital envelopes. If you added 2 million to your budget right now, and the debt service on that next year would be pretty impactful for the next year. So we're always trying to leverage that capital envelope and pick priorities within various projects. They felt that with this carryover, they had the ability and the two grants that they had, they had the ability to do that project and not, and do other things as well.
There's a bit of an ebb and flow to it, I think, if we're hearing. Counselor Rice?
Well, no, I'm mulling too. So, so because it seems that if we have this plan, we should be each year in our financial plan, we should budget for a $2 million grant and 2 million debt. And we may not get the grant, and so we wouldn't spend that money. But we have a goal to get the flood up to, floodproofing up to a certain standard. And so we should at least be spending $2 million a year. And if we get grants, we should be spending $4 million a year. So it does beg the question of why this year, there's no $2 million in debt for floodproofing. And I get the carryover part, and that's a project in the upper Charles Sloop, but there's other stuff we have to do. And is there a reason why we would not have that additional 2 million in the budget issue?
The borrowing will include some of the, will be included in some of that 3.7, but you're right, we're not adding an additional borrowing level based on that anecdote. But I think the 2 million that's in there right now is enough for this current year.
There's 2 million for this year plus the, the carryforward.
The carryforward of the grant, has satisfied the grants that are coming.
There's 2 million in grants in the budget, which we, we don't get. So there's, there's nothing in this year's budget that's guaranteed to be for that.
Well, we can go back and look at that unless you already have. But my understanding is that Mr. Rolston had it quite specifically figured out how he was going to take care of those two grants and flowing in and the, and the grant. But if we've shorted the expenditure, we'll go have a look for sure. I don't believe we have. I think six is what he was counting on.
It would be six this year, like two combined.
But what they're concerned about is that we're only showing the 2 million grant funded this year, and then the carryforward's a little over. We're not showing 4 million, 2 and 2 in this year, and then the carryforward coming in over top. That's what they're concerned for.
Yes, in 2019, in 2019, I believe the decision was made not to budget $4 million for dicking as had been done historically. And that because it was known and engineering knew that they were not going to go forward with the 2018 project in a timely manner, which wasn't going to happen last year, in anticipation of that, they reduced the total amount that was committed to for 2019 so that in total it became a $6 million overall project, which was a more manageable number from engineering's perspective as far as what they could get done within a year. Carrying forward the existing, as you had said, the grants that have been applied for, and then the additional funding that would be provided by the district would, would allow them to do up to $6 million, thereabouts, this year in 2019.
Problem is, we're not providing any funding from the district this year.
Sorry?
The borrowing that we're carrying, we haven't borrowed it yet.
We haven't borrowed it yet.
The grant sources still, or the funding sources coming from the carryforward as well.
So I can understand that, you know, work levels kind of go up and down. And I guess, speaking to myself, you know, on a five-year basis, if we try to hit this average going forward, that's fine, and I appreciate things will impact that. But really, if we're only showing $2 million in grants this year as a source of funding, A, we might not get that, and B, aren't they matching grants? Do we always not have to have a district contribution to that?
I think that was some 73%. Yeah, it's, it's more than 50% granting though on those two programs that they're making out of that one.
But wouldn't that reflect in the budget? Whatever we're going to have to put into that.
It should, but when the carryforward comes to, we, we will go look at it because to be honest, I haven't gone back to make sure the splits are correct myself. But they are pulling forward borrowing, 50% of borrowing from before. And Mr. Rolston is usually very astute to where his funding sources are and what he needs to make that project go. So I'm thinking that the 50% borrowing is what he needs against these other higher-level grant programs to get him the right answer. But we will go back and check it.
Maybe it's just in our column.
Yeah, and, and because the carryforward isn't lined up with it yet, you're not seeing the distinction.
Does it rank you? Counselor French?
So I understand, if, if we are, you know, putting 2 million a year in terms of borrowing, budgeting 2 million a year, then we don't spend it, you know, work goes up and down about every year, we're putting in or allocating that 2 million dollars from borrowing for dykes. If we don't spend it, am I correct in thinking there's no cost to us if we don't spend it a given year? There's no cost to us in terms of interest and debt servicing. It may impact our room to borrow other things, but the real hit in terms of interest and debt servicing doesn't happen until we actually do the project. And so from, other than your borrowing room, there's no real risk in accounting for 2 million additional borrowing every year.
Through the mayor, that's correct. Until we actually take the borrowing, there isn't a cost impact. And that's one of the reasons you didn't see debt service being a big factor this year in your, in your existing service level because we didn't borrow the 2 million for dicking.
Counselor French?
I'd like to get a sense of what's the probability that actual dicking work will be done this year? Is it very likely, somewhat likely, not very likely? Yeah, I just think Gary's probably a guy who holds it off.
He went to make sure that Mr. Rolston hasn't. So my, my understanding is that we're waiting on First Nations permission because we were needing to do work on the dicking system that impacts two reserves. So we have that permission now, and that, I believe the tender came forward to us a few months ago, so it's proceeding now. So I believe we're highly confident it's getting spent this year.
Mr. Rolston, and Mr. Buckston, you have a question around whether the 3.7 or the 5.7 is actually going to get spent this year? Is that really likely?
Counselor, I don't know the answer to that question, but I will find out. So the question is, are we going to spend 5.7?
Million in 20, 20, 2019?
I did ask Mr. Rolston if he thinks we are falling behind. His answer was no.
I'm not necessarily fixated on 5.7 million. I'm more, are we certain some investment is going to be made in the year ahead?
Absolutely. There's a large construction contract that's underway. There's a design on the watershed equal viewing area, which is complex, that will be tricky. And preliminary design on Guineale Park. So yes, we, we will spend money. I will find out about 5.7.
Well, I think the, that's a question of interest, or French's question, or whether we can actually.
And the question's answered.
You all right? All right. Counselor Stone, Counselor Anderson.
So I, I appreciate that there's ebb and flow in work, and things happen, and sometimes there's multi-year projects, there's lots of things going on. Having a $43 million capital fund budget going into 2019 raises flags for me, and I think it banks a broader discussion around capacity and level of effort on the staff side as these projects go over. I will just state that I don't want to see that level of carryover from 2019 to 2020. And if we do continue to see that level of carryover, I think we really need to have a serious discussion about delivery of the projects that we're sitting in.
Counselor Anderson?
Just my question's on a similar theme as Counselor Stoner. But firstly, this information on carryforward completes a picture for me as first time going through the process. These are all the projects I came to ask about during the last public information meeting in 2018. One of them keeps coming up over a period of probably four years now, and that's the one I referred to earlier, the sponsored Crown Grant survey. Following from Counselor Stoner's observation on how does this relate to staff capacities? Because why is this not being addressed? These are Crown Grant applications, to my understanding, that go back quite a number of years. They were, one of them was launched in 2005. So I'm just wondering whether this is a matter of staff capacity and it's so, maybe this is information we, that might be useful for us earlier in the process so we could ask that question. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor Elliot, Robyn Arthur's General Manager, Corporate Services. The sponsored Crown Grant, those are survey funds. Right now, those applications sit with the ministry and they're waiting for feedback or consultation from First Nations, and they've been sitting there for several years. So there's just a few outstanding, I think there's only four properties remaining, if I'm not mistaken, but they are on hold right now. They're, they're with the ministry. So it is not to do with staff capacity at all.
That had been my assumption, it was staff capacity. Thank you for that information.
Ms. Stone?
Thank you, Mayor Elliot. And the second part of the question around having to carryforward information much earlier in, in finances, defense, the shift in systems, they worked very hard to get this information as quickly as they could. This wasn't a holdback, this was the ability to bring it forward this year. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So on to the next slide, and the second of the three pages of carryforward information that was provided today. Utility capital carryforward funds. Within the utilities, carryforward requests is $7.3 million. As outlined on the slide here, there are six projects brought that are worth $5.3 million. So that equates to approximately 70% of the total carryforward budget. As you can see, three of those projects, vertical landfill is underway. Basically, we're spending money, it's just the speed at which this project is being completed is perhaps somewhat different than what was originally anticipated when the project was conceived. I'm sure Mr. Buckston can, can address the chief utantalus sewer question. And I believe that the water treatment plant upsized for growth is a situation, again, a project that's underway, that is a spending timing issue. The oceanfront DCC projects, there are three projects. The timing of those projects is more at the discretion of the developer than at the discretion of the district. So we need to budget, and again, this is a scenario where they are DCC funded projects. We are budgeting the full cost of the project because that is how we budget, that's what is required of us. But the actual commitment of the district is not significant with respect to any of the oceanfront DCC projects. And that, I believe, is the equivalent to our standard 1% contribution with respect to those projects. So it's not a lot of money, of our money tied up with that. And again, it's the projects, the oceanfront project is underway. The specific timing of the spending for the individual components is at the discretion of the, of the developer who is far in the cost of the project. In addition to that, there are some remaining projects that are outstanding, and the value of those projects is approximately $2 million. Should be reminded that these are utility funded capital projects, and therefore the funding for these projects is through utility rates as opposed to direct property taxation. Comments? Questions? There are limited. We will move on to the last list, which is a really long page. Special project carryforwards, which are the operating projects that have been carried forward from one year to the next. There are just under a million dollars worth of projects in tow. There are, I believe, 39 projects on this listing. There, we've identified four projects which make up just over one-third of the total. And as you can see, the value of those projects ranges from approximately $70,000 to $130,000. And Counselor Rice, to, to address the question that you had raised earlier about the changes in, in cost structure, cost alignment between capital and operating. Integrated Stormwater, sorry, I won't say Integrated Stormwater Management, but the last project, Storm Sewer Inventory Collection and Condition Assessment, had historically been viewed as a capital project. So in 2019, that is now, that's a $100,000 annual project. In 2019, that project has been moved from capital to operating. Okay? And so you'll, this project is now on the operating carryforward list because what's going to come out of that is a study and an assessment which will be used to assist engineering and operations in planning for asset replacement. So it's not the actual purchase of an asset, it's understanding and planning required to determine when those assets will be replaced. So it's not capitalized. So that being said, just under $400,000, a total million dollars of operating projects that these, a remaining group of special projects that are being carried forward, which have a cost of just over $600,000. There are 34 projects in total, which make up that $614,000, and the average cost of those projects is $18,000 each. You have a listing in front of you. Some projects have been highlighted already, questions answered. At this point, we'd be happy to answer additional questions.
Counselor Rice?
Thank you. And so Storm Sewer is not sanitary sewer, so that's not part of the utility, that's part of the operating budget. And I get the upfront soft costs. We had a discussion in the past, and I forget how And I get the upfront soft costs. We had a discussion in the past, and I forget how it came up frankly, about at some point, do we ever capitalize those costs and roll it into the cost of the actual hard part of the project?
If the capitalization rules, I guess, policy as approved by the district, set out that if you are doing an engineering study that becomes, that's like, say, a feasibility study per se, or detailed engineering, that leads to the construction of an asset, the money spent on the engineering components can be capitalized as part of the overall cost of the asset. But if you are doing a study, okay, and in this instance, we're collecting and assessing what's out there, what's in the ground, determining the condition assessment of them, and using that information to feed into the asset management plan so that we can determine when these various pipes need to be replaced, that information doesn't actually generate the construction. It is, it's telling us, oh, in five years, the pipes on Second Avenue need replacing. In five years, when we replace those pipes, that becomes a capital project. This portion of the study that tells us when to do that does not.
The building bylaw rewrite, I thought we did that. Do you remember approving the building bylaw in 2018?
We've carried that for a reason, but I would have to go check with Mrs. Bell and ask why we've carried that. There's some further work, but I can remember what it was, and we'll find out.
The other one is that we did update the subdivision control bylaw, but there's still tend to have been carrying forward from that. So, I'd be interested to know what we're carrying forward.
Again, we think there's some further amendments that we want to do to that. Could be around road, that was around road cross-sections and productions of graphics around, graphics around both.
The other one to the CAO is that we've got to carry forward $26,400 for a human resources master plan, and then we are additionally taxing $50,000 for HR master plan this year's budget. Do we really need $76,000 for those two different projects?
Where is the 26,000?
Same capacity. It's about a third of the way down that list.
26,000? HR's...
It's, it's...
It's not 26,000.
It's 26,400. It's just two above the crown's, one's your big flag.
Sorry, I'm not seeing it. I'm seeing 17,000.
Just above that.
What's the HR system's list?
There's an error on the right. It's the left, I think it's the leftover from the plan.
Mayor Elliott, that's, thank you for pointing that out. If this is carrying forward for the master plan from our last year of working on master plan, the other one should come down like that.
Okay, so we can reduce that tax amount by $24,000, is that correct?
Yeah, I think. What am I... Can we come back to you with that, actually? We need to have a conversation.
Any other questions, Counsel on that? Counsel Anderson?
Yes, under infrastructure capital projects, Stan Clark mural rehabilitation, this was a topic during the public input meeting in 2018. And at that time, the committee, or the staff liaison, or Mayor Heinzman herself, received the opinion from two public art professionals in Lower Mainland that is an extraordinarily large figure. And for that amount of money, you might want to think about a new public art project. So, I would defer to the public art committee, but that is a very large amount of money for that rehabilitation. I've been part of, watching that project for 25 years and close to my family. That's a large amount of money.
Counsel French?
We discussed this at the last meeting, and I heard similar feedback from some of the members of the committee.
So, staff, if that is determined to be too high, the number, what can we give of it?
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find the line item.
Well, Counselor Anderson is keeping us on our toes. He's gone back to the capital projects?
Oh, okay, sorry.
And Counsel Anderson is not wearing the linear fashion today. That's a third from the bottom, $11,800, so. So, if the, if the public art committee determines that that money is too high for their needs for the mural project, what happens there?
So, through the mayor, the public art, I probably should explain this briefly. Under our public art policy, there's a 1% caveat for capital. And so, each year, we basically assess what that is, and we run it into the public art committee line item, and then they decide if they have any current costs a year, and then they drop the rest down into a public art provision. This $75,000 was drawn up last year out of the public art provision for projects that they want, they thought they would want to accomplish in 2018. And I guess if it's carrying over, they didn't get to accomplish that, or they used their current year budget, and we're just carrying it. It could be that we need to still bet this past devin as to whether she, the public art committee, wants to carry the full amount forward. Please bear with us. We are starting to deal with accounting pieces and other pieces, but perhaps Counsel French can speak to it more in terms of what their ideas are for the next year. But if they want to do capital expenditures, they have to have a line item here. So, it's kind of a procedural game as well. We have to have, be able to tap into it and use things in the provision.
And just to be clear, Counsel Anderson is specifically asking about the Stan Clark mural rehabilitation project.
Oh, I'm sorry.
At $11,800, which is distinctly different from the major project. And I'll leave the major project because there's nothing to talk about that right now. And then, the mural rehabilitation, I'm not too worried if this amount is too high. The public art committee would happily find other ways to allocate the funding.
Or...
If, in fact, we find, yeah. If, in fact, we find that $11,800 is significantly higher than the rehabilitation project needs.
Counsel Everett?
With this, using this public art as an example, this is a specific, a specific project versus the sort of funding of, of public art. So, how does that specific project end up like this rather than just a general funding of, and public art committee just execute? Is it because it's a work, is it a work plan from, or how does that in your plan?
I'm not sure. You know the answer.
I don't. I'd love to know the answer. It's a great question.
Counsel Everett is just wondering how this particular project is coming through this budget rather than through the public art committee budget.
To be frank, I'm going to have to look unless Mr. Russell knows better than I do. I have to check and see if it's a different, if I misunderstood.
This is, if I might, this was a parks project that came forward through public feedback initially, and then it was referred by counsel in the last term to the public art committee to steer and to take on and to do the RFP and to find a mosaic and decide on the proper location, all that. So, it initially started a couple of years ago. Sorry.
While we're in the neighborhood of this one, on the same page, the item above, the off-leash dog park, what works underway there or what?
Thank you. We are coming back to council in a couple of weeks for, I mean, with a new engagement plan, so we can talk more about it then. But this will go partly to engagement and also partly to infrastructure for existing parks that we have like signage.
That's your question?
General enough that we'll probably know more about it than just...
We will.
See, one of the more lively conversations we do. Counsel Brett?
And on that same talk topic, taking this one step further, I would encourage staff to be open to the concept of a linear off-leash dog park. Significant area with a long distance to run.
How about that?
Perfect.
Really? On this topic?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Not on dog parks.
Oh, sorry.
If I might, Mayor Elliott, or if there's a better time, I can provide further clarification.
No, I was just kind of hoping you'd move us off dog parks.
Okay. On the HR strategy? Yes, thanks. I have to apologize. I misunderstood. The overall project ask is $75,000 over two years. So, this year would be 50, next year would be 25. So, in terms of taxation this year, yes, it can come down by 25,000, but I want to ensure that council understands that next year, it's a multi-year project.
Are there multiple projects in that?
Yes.
If I might, so, this is proposed as a program. So, it's, we want to develop an HR strategy that is no different than any of the other strategies we've got for our assets, only this is our human resources asset. So, we want to do workforce planning from now for the next 10 years as we anticipated. Compensation review, we know that we're up against some problems, not just with exempt staff, but we've come up against it with the union staff as well. When it comes to the union staff, we can tap into METRO for that because they have indicated that they would help us with that, that because they see value for themselves. We want to do a retention, an attraction strategy, and succession plan. So, to look at the assets that we have right now and decide, you know, where are our talents and where should they be directed, and what's the development for that. So, there's five different programs. And before Ms. Lashar left us, she went to market and did some RFP and got some quotes on the various components. So, last year's never got done because of capacity issues and change in our HR component. But we do know that it's unlikely that we're going to do this in, just in 2019. We'll need to carry it into 2020. But what we would like to do is go for RFP and get the various components set up so that we can pull the trigger and know where we're getting them done from, if that makes sense.
Okay, so we're carrying forward 25, we'll tax for 25, and we'll put 25 in 2020.
We do that.
Does that work?
It does, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Everybody having fun yet? Anybody feel like the need to maybe eat chocolate?
Eat chocolate?
Good thing we didn't do the committee discussion, except that time. We've got about seven minutes left before we start eating into our L and L G discussion. So, any final questions?
Just starting to wrap my head around carry forward and sort of things we were, regardless of how we're going to fund them, whether it's from a reserve or direct taxation and so on, it's things that we planned to do in 2018, we didn't get done, so now we're planning to do in 2019. We're keeping the placeholders there in the budget. But the one item, I think it's a slide back, was $2 million for real estate. And the way, maybe I just misunderstood, but it sort of sounded to me more like a reserve fund thing, or did we have a specific plan for that, that spend, and it didn't happen?
So, we're not going to talk specifics because land acquisition is a...
Yeah, no, I don't want to talk about a specific project. Just conceptually, did we have, you know, we needed something, or this is a rainy day fund and we carry a rainy day real estate fund or an emergency real estate fund in carry forward?
We don't do that, but I'll let the CAO speak to that. I don't know how you want to speak to it. I know we have the real estate facility strategy, and it outlines many, many things that we need to do, which includes small pieces of land acquisition for our diking, some road runways, like small pieces all around the district. If you look at that plan, it's not just about buildings. It includes many things. And then, maybe I'll hand it over to you as far as I go too far.
Sure. I just want to clarify that we don't budget for rainy days, but there is a real estate facility strategy, and this is a preemptive budget.
So, we did have specific projects in mind for this. Those didn't happen yet for this amount, and so, we're planning that those will happen this year.
Specific is a strong word. Words, yeah. We have a strategy.
And I guess that's where, you know...
Strategy is coming to us, and we don't do rainy day funds.
And maybe that's wrong, but, you know, I'm just trying to, like, is this a reserve? Should this be a reserve?
It's not a reserve.
Yeah, I'm looking at my...
Through the mayor, in fairness, we are funding it from our, from our reserve, from our land cell reserve.
It has a purpose, so I just don't want to confuse it publicly. Everything in the budget has a purpose.
Yeah.
The purpose you're asking for is part of our real estate strategy.
Okay.
It's funded from reserve. Is that right, Christine?
Both, yes. The one that you're seeing and the other in the current, and this one are both from land cell.
Okay, and I, and maybe I just missed her, but earlier in the discussion, I thought it was mentioned that, you know, we have this money there in case we need it, kind of thing. Well, that seems a little vague for putting that amount of money aside, so as long as, you know, it's tied to a strategy with dates and so on, then I'm comfortable.
Good. So, my goal has always been to see, so carry forwards have always been sort of like, be in my bonnet. I get curious about them. Certainly, next year, I really prefer to see this list come back and understand which we tax for, and so, their source of funding. Because I don't panic so much when I see that a venture come from borrowing or that we are using a reserve, and so, it's designated in our reserve. What I get concerned about is that we're taxing too much in one year that we're not accomplishing, and that's not fair to taxpayers. So, I would like to see it come back next year with that sort of analysis on it. The other thing is, I have, I guess I have an hypothesis that if we finish our budget earlier, and this year is an anomaly because it was an election year, and we're trying to get this new council through a budget process, but if we say had our budget done by the year end, December 31st, does that allow us to tender earlier, put out our borrowing bylaw earlier, and then get people bidding on these projects and get shovels in the ground in the spring rather than in the summer and therefore achieve more on our capital plan? Like, is that a fair statement, or are the two things not related?
So, through the mayor, what, there are a couple of strategies for getting out in front of the tendering process. One can be that we do a more fulsome review of year two of our financial plan because then legally they can go ahead and tender. So, that would be a key strategy to involve. We agree that we would like to get our budgets out earlier. We would prefer to not have the impact of both coming through in January, our year end and our budget. Having said that, there are a couple of things, a couple of unknowns for us. It is often in January that we're able to get a handle on the amount or the dollar value of what's carrying forward, and for us to be able to carry forwards, we have to be able to incorporate that in the financial plan. But yes, we could do it earlier than we've done it this year. There were a number of factors, obviously, switching over a financial system and having to rejig. All the special projects was a key slowdown for us this year. And also, not being through the workshops predominantly in December. But yes, we can go earlier. I'm not sure we would be able to accomplish December without doing a provisional budget and then amending and going with a final budget once we have carry forwards and the final rolls or anything. And Mayor Elliott, if I can add, in addition to a more solid two-year plan to allow for middle tendering, yes, the earlier the budget, the earlier staff can go and tender and get shovels in the ground.
Okay, thanks. Counsel, any other questions? Counsel Reese?
Well, that raises an interesting point, and that is the more fulsome second year of the financial plan, because really what we're talking about is capital here, remember? Primarily capital, which is probably simpler to project ahead and proceed than the operating. And so, maybe not this... And so maybe not this moment, but perhaps over the next few months, we could have a bit of a discussion about what that might involve. So that we would have the option perhaps of thinking about the next budget being in effect for two years as opposed to one year for the capital components to get ahead of the tendering process. And somehow in the past, we call that discussion, and I don't know if we ever actually got done, tried to do that. I know we had a bunch of early releases of funds, and those are sometimes problematic decisions, but just to get into a temporary process or whatever. But it might be an interesting thing to explore, that aspect of, to solve that problem. Because the other problem, I take the point, and I've always agreed with it, actually, try to get the budget done by the end of the year, but we don't have any idea at that point of the assessment. That doesn't go until January, so we're kind of guessing about that significant, for me at least, a significant part of the budget process is how much people end up spending or have to pay. And that's based on the assessment and the growth of the assessment. And so I don't think we have that information by the end of the year, but it'll probably be probably another month before it shows up. Usually it shows up until January.
So through the mayor, I will just clarify, we do actually get a completed role early December.
Oh, big a fight.
But usually with Christmas and workshopping and stuff, you see, you start to see us having done any kind of metrics on it in January. So that's why you would feel that way.
Mr. Russell, anything else? Acknowledging that I called you Mr. Rowland earlier, but it's Mr. Russell, sorry about that. Do you have any other thing?
No, I don't. I actually am going to go to the next slide, which talks about where we go from here. So at this point, we would open this to council questions, obviously. So please feel free to ask all those questions you haven't had an opportunity to ask yet. And the second part of this will be to confirm council's direction. So our intent, or what we're hoping to get from this, is after we have answered your questions, that council will provide direction to administration to come forward with a financial plan bylaw based on the information that you have that has been provided to you to date. We believe that this package of information is comprehensive. We believe that it reflects the requirements of the organization in the upcoming budgeting year and a projection of our next five years. We would like to prepare the necessary financial plan bylaw so that we can put that in front of council at council's next meeting, if at all possible.
Do we have clarity, Mr. Buxton, on Counsel Stoner's question around diking from Mr. Wilson?
In terms of the 5.7 million?
Yes.
No, sorry, I didn't ask that question, but I said, I will do that right now. Sorry.
Or on the funding? I think it was on the funding. Is that okay?
I'm still a little bit confused on how that is. And if we could get perhaps a more fulsome response on how exactly those dollars break down year over year based on integrated flood hazard management plan?
Is that something we can deliver on today?
Sorry, I might need clarity on that.
Is Mr. Wilson here?
Yeah.
Is he interested to walk through his plans? Counsel, any other questions while we track down Mr. Wilson? Counsel Penningill?
So just based on some of the comments around carry forward and thinking about the HR strategy and the rationale for it, do we have indications on whether or not our carry forward levels are reasonable or high or low compared to similar budgets, similar communities, or where we are at? Is there an indication from this that maybe we haven't been budgeting for appropriate service levels, given what we're seeing carry forward?
I think on, through the mayor, an analysis of our historic values with respect to capital shows that the 2018 year was, the carry forwards were higher than normal. We completed around 50% of the total budget. Historically, we have been completing around 2/3 or slightly, slightly higher than that. So 2018 was an anomaly from a capital standpoint. To be honest with you, from an operating standpoint, I did do a bit of digging around, but we don't have the same depth of statistics on a historical basis that are already available. It's not to say that they aren't there, they're just not compiled, okay? So from an operating standpoint, I really can't address, I can't answer that question at this point, we need to do a little more research.
And so do we know other municipalities or other similar, like, is this a comparable level of carry forward? Or is that the data you're referring to? We don't, we just don't have this.
The comparison that I did was, was I was looking at the history of the district. I was not looking at this as a comparison. Compiling a comparison is easier said than done in that most communities don't actually share that information other than going into their minutes, et cetera, and pulling it out. So it's a little, there's a bit of difficulty involved in generating that information. I will say for myself, because this is not the first municipality that I have worked in, that on a capital basis, spending in the 60 to 70, sorry, I would say 65 to 75% range is probably fairly normal. 70% is probably a figure that's, you know, consistent across many municipalities, large and small. So our numbers for 2018 are a little low, but as Mr. Buxton pointed out, there's some very specific issues that occurred in 2018 that related to large projects that weren't able to move forward. Looking at the statistics that we have, historically, we've been able to hit that 75 or 80% mark fairly regularly. So I believe that it's a bit of an anomaly on the capital side. And, you know, with good weather and proper planning, quite sure we have the planning on our side, we'll be able to get back to that number.
Okay, Mr. Russell in the room, and I don't want to talk for longer, I know you're on the list. Okay, I'm going to ask Counsel Stoner to ask your question. Now, Mr. Wilson's here, Charles Dig.
Hey, Mr. Wilson. So I was just flagging, as per the integrated flood hazard management plan, the recommendation is to put $4 million a year in the budget, $2 million municipal funds, and $2 million in grants. In 2019, our budget only has $2 million under a grant line item plus 3.7 million carryover from 2018. That puts us just under $6 million for 2018 to 2019. And in my mind, that math puts us $2 million behind the proposed year over year. So would you please explain a fact of concern from your perspective or not, and why?
Through the mayor, so in 2018, we received a $3.9 million grant through New Building Canada Fund, it's a provincial federal fund. In 2018, we didn't actually expend much money on that. We're just starting up with our project, so we're doing design and permitting for the Squamish River dike upgrade that's taking place at Rockin' Jell presently. And so because we didn't spend much money in 2018, and we're going to be completing that project through 2019, I don't feel we'll actually be able to coordinate and spend more than the 3.9 million plus the $2 million from municipal funding in 2019. So that's basically from a practical perspective what I feel we can actually complete this year.
So I appreciate the balance of level of effort and capacity, but you mentioned there, you don't think you can spend additional to the $2 million that's in from the municipal contribution, but right now the line item is $2 million in grants. So I want to check back with finance, is that $2 million is a meaningful call?
Good comment. From my perspective, it should be funded from municipal funding because we don't have that grant secured so far. And we do need some certainty on being able to spend that money because we have certain commitments through our ongoing project that we're working on.
So through the mayor, we will take it back and look and make sure that the borrowing isn't carrying forward as part of the 3.7. Unfortunately, I don't have a schedule from last year to see how it was funded, but we will make sure that we have our municipal skin in the game.
Thanks for your question. Is this on this topic?
Yeah, very. Given the conversation, though, should we not then, or are we planning that in 2021 or '22, we're going to have a $6 million spend on dikes because, you know, we haven't put that money in?
We could do that. Right now, we've set aside $4 million per year, the $2 million from municipal, assumed $2 million from grants. That's in order to complete the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, dike upgrading schedule on roughly a 25-year timeline. So we do expect that there's going to be aberrations in that when we receive large grant money. Some years we might spend more, other years we might spend less if we're doing a lot of planning for future years. So I think that's a decision for council. I think if we're spending an average of $4 million a year, we don't necessarily need to, like if we're a little bit less in one year to go and make up for that in a future year, although that is a policy decision that council would make.
All right. Any more questions from Mr. Wilson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Throwback to Counsel Ray, then Counsel Anderson, would we like to wrap it up?
Yeah, just quickly, sort of next steps, I was just wondering, the thing we have not yet discussed, of course, is the allocation of the revenue amongst the taxation of the different classes, and I'm just wondering when we're proposing to do that. I know it was mentioned, I'm sorry, but that's immediately, so that's kind of the thing that finally locks in the budget.
So through the mayor, we did actually do a little bit of, you know, high-level discussion with council before, but not to the level of bringing you in. There's really not, we were planning to do that in April, where we actually go and verify ratios and whether we're still happy with those ratios and what the revised role looks like going through the impacts.
And as part of that, will you bring along some comparisons? We've always had, particularly with the ratios, TC average, ratio to residential, et cetera, for these different classes, and we can get that updated.
Thank you. Through the mayor, yes, it's part of our taxation model. We'll make sure that we update this for you.
Counsel Anderson?
Yes, I have a question regarding the Human Resources Master Plan. Mr. Basely in the budget feedback, referring to our organizational chart, asks about how we compare ourselves to communities of similar size. How do we fare to quote here on total FTE positions and costs taking into account our population growth? Now, my question is, will or does the Human Resources Master Planning address benchmarking with other municipalities?
Mayor Elliot, through you. Yes, it likely will. In terms of comparing against our population, we looked at that yesterday, and we're pretty much on par in terms of where our staffing is relative to the population. Now, whether that's an accurate measure even, we want the strategy to address that if it should be, does that make sense? Because really, it's about what services are we providing and what capacity we need to do that. And that again makes it challenging, and we will benchmark with other communities, but it depends on the context. So again, what another community is providing, and as you know, with Squamish, and a lot of our comparisons is that communities of similar size are not dealing currently with the level of development and growth that we are. So there's a number of layers, but a short answer to your question is yes, that will be part of it.
Thank you.
So clarity on the diking number, the change in the council conference budget, where the shift in the HR strategy to 25 carryover, 25 tax, 25 next year tax? Were there any other changes that council members heard or we discussed? Or was it, they were good? What's up?
Sorry, did you touch the carry on the building bylaw?
Oh, in the building bylaw. Mr. Buxton, that's, staff believe there's ongoing work.
Yes, the intention there was to use that to evaluate green building incentives, so that will sort of look like part of the zoning bylaw, but we're going to use that money to do an investigation of incentive programs.
Okay. Great. Counsel? We'll move on from what I was saying, people have a good budget. So the next order of business is that the bylaw comes forward to us for approval, and then in April, once we have the final role, we have the discussion around setting the tax rate for the different classes. That shakes down in April, right? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Russell. How about we have a recess? We'll begin the LMLGA conversation around resolutions. I expect we will finish it before lunchtime, so we'll try and finish that after the transit piece because we have guests coming after lunchtime. But counsel, if you put it in writing, it would really help the minute taker if they had a version of it in front of them. And I also printed mine to make sure that you all saw what we proposed last year. So if you want to send it to Terry, she can print it for you. And then we'll take, let's take a 10-minute recess, so 20 to 12, we'll come back. Welcome back to Canoe the Hall. Sorry if you've been waiting to tune in, we had some technical difficulties thanks to a plunging phone. Just, I should have done this before when we finished the budget, but I just want to say the CAO, I appreciate what went into the budget this year from our finance staff, given that we were transitioning systems and it was year end, and I really appreciate their effort and how smoothly it went, given everything else on the plate. I just wanted to acknowledge that. I would be a little sorry that Mr. Russell, his mapping's aren't here right now, but we do appreciate it, and it went very smoothly. You wouldn't have known that behind the scenes, we were transitioning our entire financial system.
I will pass that on, in fact, I'll have to watch it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so counsel, we've got some resolutions we want to discuss for LMLGA. We'll start that conversation now. I'd be curious just to know who is going to LMLGA this year? You think you are, Counsel Penningill?
I've been in line.
You think you're going? I'm just trying to see who will be there to represent. I'm going. So we have to speak to our resolutions at the conference, right? You get to go up to the microphone, unless they're in a block, in which case you don't. But many of these do go to the floor and you have to address them, so I'm just trying to get a sense of who will be there. Okay, me for sure right now, Terry. That's amazing.
And I was just unclear where we were, and if I missed the boat in terms of confirming, but if I haven't missed the boat, I am confirming now.
Oh, yeah, you haven't missed the boat, in fact, the early bird rate is still available until 13th, I believe, maybe longer. A little longer. So yes, she lost that, so just let Terry know. Counsel Anderson?
I'll be prepared to bring forward this resolution. I'm just new to the budgeting, whether to prioritize one convention or another, but I'll be available. And if this is going to go forward to resolution after I've been, I'll be there.
You can't be there unless you...
Sign up for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's up to you.
Yes.
Just let Terry know. I'm not sure that helped you too much.
Early birds available until March 3rd.
March 3rd, okay. Okay, so everyone had some resolutions put forward. Terry's having those printed now. But we'd like to say that the one we put forward last year on the telco company legislation, allowing us to treat smaller telcos as utilities and therefore extend internet service into parts of the regional district and be able to support telcos to do that, has been changed, so that is a possibility now. So that was a resolution report by SOD as well as us. Problem's actually active, so we can do that. It's great. So I'll be talking to you. So I'll be talking to Director Rainbow about that, because we had tried to do that in person in SODA Area D, and we're stymied by this inability to aid business through the community charter because it treats small telcos like large ones. So this is a big thing. So see, our resolutions can affect change, so let's not be cynical about these consequences. So I'll start with mine, because it's printed in front of you. So you see, before you printed, you, Resolution B115, that City Vancouver put forward last year. And then the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing responded. So this is the resolution that, where Vancouver sort of recognized that land speculation and sorting assessments on commercial acreage land were impacting small businesses. And they asked the province to engage an intergovernmental work group to address assessment and taxation issues immediately to enable the long-term viability of independent small business in Metro Vancouver and the rest of British Columbia. Not quite sure why they singled out Metro Vancouver and the rest of British Columbia, so just saying British Columbia. Anyway, the ministry responded and said they were going to do engagement. They've done some initial engagement with City of Van and Metro Van, and more information would be available on consultation process in early 2019. So given that there is a long runway between today and UBCM, and I don't want to put forward the same motion, I was going to propose that we wait and see what the province does. The minister is alive to this issue. They did make some changes to ground field sites in 2018 and how we can tax those. And then obviously, they're seeking to look at a just a fair way to help small businesses. So I don't know, council, what do you think? Should we keep the pressure on and make it a more general resolution about all of DC, rather than City of Van? Or allow the process to unfold? Council Race?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the idea of waiting. And I think the other thing that might get added to the discussion on this basis on media reporting is old rental stock, which can suffer the same thing, where you have a three-floor walk-up and the developer's fine with it, and the owner's fine with it, and all of a sudden, the thing gets assessed as though it's a 30-story building. And it has the same impact on the rental streets that it would on a small business on the ground floor. So, and that's a very sensitive subject, or should be a very sensitive subject for the government, so I would hope that there will be. And it's basically, if I understand correctly, it's the same issue. It's assessing the highest and best use possible, rather than what's existed. And it's even worse with the rental stock, because the owners of the building can't raise the rent like commercial landlords can, pass it on to the tenants, who doesn't own the tenants. But they're stuck with basically a building that starts to lose money very quickly, and so they're almost forced to redevelop and lose the rental stock. So that's a sort of capsule discussion of the issue. But I think that is likely to end up in this consultation based on media reporting. And I'd be happy to wait and see where that goes, rather than try to reinvent the wheel again.
How do others feel? Council Anderson, you were involved with the chamber, and I know this is still an issue that the BC Chamber is interested in, but is that response, seeing that's fair?
Yes, I think it's advisable that we liaise with the chamber on this, chamber movement, if you like. And it appears, and we will have an upcoming meeting, or you will, Mayor Elliott, with Louise Walker of the chamber to get updated on their strategy on this topic. I think that there's probably other initiatives, and not least on the rental stock housing, protection of rental stock housing. I follow the same media reports. So waiting and learning about other initiatives, I think is a good strategy, right?
Yes, and I have already reached out to Louise Walker at the chamber to make sure that I understand their policy and what the resolutions BC Chamber is putting forward on this issue. So we are aligned in that regard. All right. Council River?
I agree with you. The wording in the original resolution is strange. That last, just that last bit, "Metro Vancouver and the rest of British Columbia."
Yeah.
That is strange. But in the response, it sounds like there's vague amounts of work underway, but it is a very important issue. There's, so I don't know if we, I don't know, I think pushing or somehow, do we need to ask more specifically, are you thinking? Or, I'm hesitant to just wait and see what they do, and then we end up another year behind. But maybe they are earnestly all, you know, full steam ahead on assessing and they're taking action, so I'm not sure how to read that.
Elder Stoner, thoughts?
Can I ask a clarifying question? That we can, if need be, bring a motion forward to UBCM, go on the floor there?
Oh, yeah, we haven't even hit the deadline for UBCM. So it's not a requirement that they go through LMLGA. The executive of UBCM prefers that, but it's not a requirement. And in fact, this resolution from City of Van did not go through LMLGA, it came right to UBCM. So we could essentially wait, and then wait for UBCM and see what happens in that regard. Council Race?
And I was going to say, I wonder if we could also check with the ministry and see where they are with this consultation process? And whether it's confined to Metro Vancouver? Or whether they are in fact looking at the rest of the province? Because I think these issues, certainly we're seeing in Squamish, they're probably being replicated. Because if they are confining their profits to Metro Vancouver, then I'd be inclined to punch ahead. I was thinking what I just said. Because I think it is a PCY issue.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, I'll check with the ministry on that. We have a few minutes. We now have the printout. Let's deal with Councilor Anderson's proposal on BCR properties. So whereas BCR properties own surplus lands not required for railway and port operation and has a mandate to dispose of these lands at the highest price attainable, whereas for many local governments, these lands can represent critical opportunities relating to diverse social, recreational, economic, and infrastructure needs and purposes. Therefore, be it resolved that the mandate of BCR properties be reviewed and amended such that it will dispose of its surplus lands with considerations of local government will end needs for critical infrastructure, community recognition, and economic development, as well as for social needs such as affordable housing lands at significantly less than fair market value prices.
Yes, so BCR properties is, following the sale of BC Rail, they continue to manage a large portfolio of lands, not only in Squamish, but in the lower mainland and all the way up to Port Nelson, very likely. Three communities have, over the years, been in liaison regarding BC Rail, taxation policy, land disposition policies. They are namely Squamish, Williams Lake, and Quinell. Last year, Squamish, Williams Lake, and Quinell chambers, and Mayor Cobb of Williams Lake, and Mayor Simpson of Quinell, engaged in conversation in June, July, also involving Mayor Heitzman. And so this is where this resolution arises, is out of those conversations. And the observation, shared observation, that there's a need to bring forward common concerns regarding land disposition. The, as per the, first whereas there, the general policy or instruction from government to BCR properties is to dispose of surplus land at the highest price attainable, in a nutshell. That means there's certain ways to interpret that and administer that. And what we'd like to do is to ask for a review and bring to light circumstances regarding, for example, environmentally sensitive lands, lands that could potentially be used for affordable housing, lands that might be used for infrastructure. We have discussed this in connection with downtown properties and former rail corridor. We also have lands of interest or critical interest for, special interest for economic development. In Squamish, we have very small inventory of lands of medium industrial, as our employment land strategy points out. And the policies around that could benefit from, from Squamish's point of view, could benefit from review, a discussion with government. In Williams Lake, there are some recreational lands of interest there. And Quinell, diverse properties, more like perhaps here. We have diverse interests in these lands. So what we're asking for in the end is a review and that could benefit our ongoing dialogue with a major landowner here in Squamish that is overseen by the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure.
Thank you. Council Race?
Thank you, and I agree with all the comments, I'm not going to repeat them. The only suggestion I'd make to the resolution is at the end of the first line, the mandate be amended, be due to amended such that it, instead of will dispose, I would say be directed to dispose. I think BCR properties, from my experience, needs direction, not something that's left up to them to administer. So just put slightly more forceful language in.
The only other question I had is, Council Anderson, you mentioned environmental. Isn't listed here as one of those? I wonder if you wanted to add that? Because I'm sure it relates to diverse social, recreational, economic, environmental, and infrastructure needs.
That's a good point. It hasn't come up for Quinell or Williams Lake. And it doesn't come up for us right now, but it could, and maybe for other communities. So I'm happy to include that. And that means it would be included just environmental in the second clause, as well as the recommendation. On Council Race's suggestion, I'm quite happy with that wording. I was doing some wordsmithing to where the be directed to was dropped, but in, with this suggestion, that works just fine.
Great. Thank you. Council Penney?
My reaction would be whether or not we would also include in the consideration, something about indigenous land claims, especially when we're talking about lands in unceded territories. It just seems anytime we talk about transfer of provincially controlled lands, that's something we should...
It's interesting, because they have a duty to consult anyway when any land is positioned, so that would naturally happen through this process, because they are crown lands.
I guess there's, even so, if there's value in articulating that.
There are already overlays of policy and protocol on this topic. And I would be concerned that we would kind of add too much and maybe remove some of the force of our resolution. There are clear protocol and agreements indeed within Squamish on that topic.
Yeah, the province has very clear. So the more complicated you make your resolution, the greater chance it has of becoming contentious. And then you end up with amendments on the floor, and then you lose the intent of what you were trying to do. So we have to be careful with that. And the province already has a protocol for how they engage First Nations on disposition of crown lands, and we can't dictate that further. So I'm not sure if they would change that just because we put that in there. Elder Stoner?
I'm fine with most of the wording here. My one request would be to clarify whose responsibility would be to review and amend the mandate of BCR properties. The province. The province review and amend the mandate of BCR properties.
Sir, is there a change?
Yeah, I would propose amendment so that the last...
I think we should put the ministry, actually, since the Ministry of...
Yeah, we can either call, I was...
Simontiizing.
Which specific, whether it's the province or a specific ministry, is responsible for reviewing the mandate?
In fact, the BCR properties is a subsidiary of another company, and that company reports to the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure.
So we'll use that ministry, because that's who we met with.
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, which is my curiosity of who's actually becomes responsible for doing those actions. So which is...
Yeah, it's a good point. So for the Minutetaker, therefore be it resolved that Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure review and amend the mandate of BCR properties such that it is directed to dispose of its surplus lands. And so on.
And I suggest we can include environmental, following diverse social in the second clause, diverse social, environmental, recreational, economic. And in the final paragraph there, following critical infrastructure, environmental, community, recreational, and economic development. And we've already decided, or to, such that it be directed to dispose. So we remove the word will in that final paragraph.
Right. Council, are you good with that resolution? Give me a resolution to approve the resolution.
It would be better for us if you did.
Moved by Council Race, second by Council Stoner. Comments? Council Penney?
Yeah, I'm still, I mean, I would argue the province has policy around social, recreational, and economic things as well. And I just, you know, from the conversations I've had, people are looking for indigenous issues to be top of mind and stated as such. And I think I'm concerned about the message it sends when we sort of say, well, there's already, someone else's got policy around that, they'll take care of it. I think, you know, although it may not change the outcome per se, because there's already these policies in place, stating that explicitly with these other things puts it on the same level explicitly as just as important in our minds as something we want to be concerned about. So I do see significant value in including that here.
I haven't heard you put forward an amendment.
Oh, okay, well, I will... Can I see if there's other discussion first, something on that for a second?
Sure. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor?
My question around narrowing it down to the responsible ministry, and if that was, if that was truly necessary, actually not, because we could, I'm thinking the, is casting a broader net of who's to deal with it or provide direction to that ministry? Should we leave that, just go right to the... No, I like it, and I see where, yeah, this is an important piece. It'd be very helpful if we could do this.
Yeah, there will be hundreds of resolutions that come out of UBCM, which is part of the craziness of it all. So the more we can pinpoint who it's going to, who is responsible, the more effective it will be. And we know this is Minister Tuvanis. Can I see a hand?
Yeah.
Council Race?
Well, I was just going to respond to Council Penney's point. And I mean, while I generally agree with the sympathy, I would be concerned about putting reference to consultation and accommodation in this, because it is a duty of the province. And it's a sensitive point of local governance, in my experience, whether or not it's a duty of local governance. And we might lose a lot of support if we start to overlay this with that kind of thing. So I'd really plan to leave it out. I know the province, as the mayor said, very well defines protocols around consultation and accommodation for these types of dispositions. So anything we do is not going to really affect that.
Council French?
I support the motion on the floor as well. And worry that if we add anything and make it more complicated, we could be putting in triggers that will derail what we're trying to achieve. Pun intended.
So maybe what I will do then is sort of stand down, leave this as it stands, and consider for next year, something that maybe more directly gets at the issues on...
Sure. Okay, I'll call the question while it's in favor. Pose, motion carries. Okay, so we'll recess to a one o'clock. And after our transit discussion and the delegation bylaw, we will come back to this and look at the last of the... Thanks, council. All right, good afternoon. We are back to finish off Committee de Haul. First up after lunch is our Transit Services Expansion conversation. And also, we'll be talking about fair trade options. Welcome to our guests. Welcome to our guests. I will let you guys introduce yourselves. Over to Dora.
So I'm Dora Gunn. I'm a Sustainability Coordinator in the district. Over at us today, we have Levi Meganmere from BC Transit, the Senior Transit Planner. And we have Ryan Dennis, also at BC Transit. He's a Manager of Sales and Revenue.
Welcome, Levi. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you. So thank you again to your worshiped members of council for having us here today. So Ryan will be walking us through the fare review report. It was pulled together based on the motion that council brought forward in January. So he'll be speaking to that and to the options that were considered as part of that process. And then once we've gone through that process, we'll talk a little bit about the expansions and look for council direction on moving forward on that expansion. So I'll pass it over to Ryan.
Thank you, Levi. And thank you all for the audience this afternoon. Happy to be here to present unfair reviews for the District of Squamish. So just as a quick overview of what we're going to discuss today, we'll start with the BC Transit fare strategy and some of the future directions with our fare collection technology and things that we're looking to have in place before that happens. I will take a step back and look at the request for free fare analysis that was brought to our attention in January. And then we will look at some proposed options and what those expected impacts would be. So starting from the top, our fare review policy is generally to do fare reviews on a three to five year basis with all of our municipal systems. The last fare change occurred in District of Squamish on September 2017. The reason we're doing a bit of a shorter schedule is, one, because of the request from the District of Squamish to look into free fares. And then also, as I mentioned, we are moving towards a new fare collection technology system. And there are a couple of things that we are looking to get into place before that happens. So our BC Transit fare strategy was introduced in 2015. This was done in collaboration with our partners, local partners, and then also looking at industry best practices. The overall purpose of our fare strategy is to improve the net yield of fare revenue. So that's the total amount of revenue that is collected, less the collection costs. When we look at that, we understand that cash is inherently expensive to handle. And prepaid fares allow us to better predict and have a more stable fare revenue stream. And it also goes to increase in ridership at the same time. People who have those products on hand are more inclined to use them. Looking at fare structures, and we'll get into this in a bit, the Squamish Transit fare structure is aligned with our fare guidelines. But we make decisions based on the ease and simplicity of use of the fare structure in terms of the general public, how easy it is to produce and sell these products. Do we collect these fares in a cost effective manner? And is it hard to defraud? So a big component from BC Transit's perspective as part of this fare review is a discussion around the day pass onboard. So as a part of this program, we understand that transfers are inherently a source of conflict on the bus, just because of the subjective nature of their use. In those places, this leads to conflict between operators and the public, and also opens the opportunity for fare fraud, which leads to lost fare revenue. So what we've proposed and what we have put in place in some of our municipal systems is the introduction of the day pass onboard. So through removing transfers, we now enable the public to purchase their fare for the rest of the day on the bus by paying two times the base cash fare. In terms of observed impacts in some of our municipal systems, we've seen an increase in both revenue and ridership. Ridership primarily because people are more inclined to take multiple rides during the day because they've got the convenience of their all day fare on in person. The other trend that we've seen is a pretty considerable shift towards purchasing monthly passes, which as well lead to increased ridership. From a revenue perspective, we do see a bit of an uptick there as well because of the elimination of the ability to use transfers fraudulently. Moving towards where we're going in terms of fare collection, we are in the process of accepting proposals through an RFP process for new fare collection technology. This is based around the premise of BYOT, your bring your own ticket. So we're looking to move away from hand and proprietary fare media and towards a situation where people would pay with something that they have on their person, whether it be a cell phone or a bank card or something of that nature. This will utilize near field communication technology or tap technology and will be account based. So we'll start to gain better understanding of the ridership patterns of individual transit users as opposed to just the broad scale that we do now. Looking at the fare structure presented there, that's what we're anticipating would be accepted on the bus or available through the new fare collection technology. And as we've seen a couple of slides here, the District of Squamish and Squamish Transit System fare structure is aligned to this already. So the only difference would be.
By account based, I would just wonder whether you could explain that a bit. Do you mean by fair product? What are the accounts?
The account would be each individual person. So there would be a lot of parameters around us collecting that information, but we would understand what the patterns of ridership would be from each individual transit user.
Thank you.
As a part of this project, we are considering the unbanked, so people who might not have a mobile phone or the ability to prepaid with their debit or credit card or bank account. So cash is always going to be available. We will have products still available in a limited vendor network, but it will be a reduced number of products. It'll also allow BC Transit to help promote transit in communities a lot better. We have a number of fare programs that we run in Victoria and some of our larger systems that we'd like to see expanded out, including employer programs or partnerships with developers to increase the number of people using transit that way. Like I said, we are in the RFP phase of this. Ideally, what we're looking to do is to have an agreement signed with the prospective vendor by the end of the summer, work through the design over the fall and winter next year, and start rolling out our pilot community sometime early 2020. So I'll pass it off to Levi in regards to the request for free fare analysis here.
Great, thanks, Ryan. So as per council direction on January 22nd, we've looked at a couple of free fare options to bring it back to council. One thing that we've learned through our previous fare change process and also what we've seen in a number of other communities throughout the province is when we move to a free fare type service, we definitely do tend to see an increase in ridership. And in certain cases, there's the requirement for additional service to be provided in order to accommodate that additional demand. So for example, as part of the September 2017 fare change that happened here in Squamish, we extended free fares from children four and under to people 12 and under. And what we found is that we were starting to get pass ups on certain trips. In general, it tended to be aligned with the school trips. So we have sort of seen direct experience of that in action. So under both of these free fare options that we're looking at today, we have also included some considerations for future expansion as well to accommodate that, to make sure that we're able to address the increase in ridership and that we're not creating challenges with the system. So just wanted to give some of that background and context as part of this discussion.
So before we go into the options that we're presenting, here's just a quick reminder of what the fare structures are in the Squamish Transit System. Like I said, in terms of our fare guidelines under our fare strategy, the fare structure is aligned with the exception of that day pass onboard piece. In terms of the hand needed fares, this was something that wasn't considered under the last fare review, but we do recommend that handed art fares align with conventional fares, just to promote equality across the users of each transit service. So looking at the proposed fare options, which we'll break down here shortly, option one is going to be what BC Transit is proposing in terms of introducing the day pass onboard. Option two looks to also include the day pass onboard, but introduce free fares for all riders under the age of 18, or 18 and under, pardon me. And then option three is free fares for all riders. So looking at option one, here it's effectively the same fare structure with the removal of transfers and the introduction of day pass onboard. As I mentioned before, we've seen in the systems that have this in place, an increase in both ridership and revenue because of the aforementioned trends with people riding the bus more and giving day with their day pass and also moving towards monthly pass products. So I guess just to summarize this, we see about a 9% increase in revenue and a 10% increase in ridership under this option. Option two introduces the same day pass onboard program, which makes fares free for anyone aged 18 and under. What we see is a fairly considerable increase in ridership at 22% and then also a decrease in revenue of about 38%. Sure, yeah. And as Levi just mentioned, one piece of this would be if we were to introduce free fares to the point that Levi just mentioned, we would be looking for a bit of an extended lead time to implement this, just to make sure that all service related considerations are captured in any sort of service planning and looking to avoid a situation as happened in 2017. And then moving on to option three, same timeline of a fall 2020 introduction. If transit is free for everyone, we'd obviously see a decrease of all of the current fare revenue and about a 30% increase in transit ridership. The large, the jump between free fares for students to free fares for everyone isn't, I guess mirrored, you could say. We see only an 8% increase between free fares for students to free fares for everyone. And that's largely because that's our most elastic age group. Those people are more inclined to get on the bus and they also don't have the other option in a lot of instances of being able to drive themselves. So that's where we would see a large amount of the ridership if we were to go to free fares come from, with that 8% difference between the two of the options, options two and three being the adult population moving onto the bus. And just to highlight things quickly in terms of handing dark fares, we would recommend increasing any affair to $2 to align with the current conventional fare. And there are some fairly minor impacts to revenue and ridership as well. And now we begin with Levi to speak to what we would expect in terms of these service impact.
Thanks, Ryan. So under option one, the increase in ridership is not as significant. And so we feel that that ridership increase can probably be accommodated within the existing service levels. For option two and option three, as we saw with increasing the free fares to 12 and under, there's definitely going to be the need for some additional service, in particular for those peak times when we see the majority of our students traveling within the community. So for option two, we're proposing an added 4,000 annual service hours and two buses for a total local cost of somewhere between $350,000 to $450,000 a year. Keeping in mind, these are all high level estimates at this time, and we'd be looking to refine these through our three year expansion planning process that will be coming back to the district later this summer on. For option three, once again, we'd be looking at the fall 2020 timeline and we are looking at about a 5,500 hour increase in three buses for a total local cost of around $500,000 to $600,000 in local cost. The question will probably be asked, how did we arrive at these various numbers? So essentially what we did is the service hour pieces are looking to just expand by the percentage increase in ridership. It's, we have the community of Whistler where we actually, they have a policy where they have free fares on the weekends through the summer. And so we've actually done some ridership analysis and what we found is for those weekends, we're up about 26 to 30% in ridership on those service days. And we also do provide a higher level of service on those days to help accommodate that increased demand. So what we've done is we've taken the context from some other communities where we have tried out free fares and we've used those to help inform these proposals that we're bringing forward to today. And then once again, just to add to Ryan's previous comment around the timelines, once again, because expansion resources would be required, we need to kind of go through our three year expansion planning process to ensure that we're able to secure that funding. So this summer, we would bring that forward to the local council for your local approval. And then it would go forward to the province the following spring for the province's approval of their share of the cost as well.
So just to summarize the options that are presented to you, here is what we would anticipate being the relative impacts on each of them, or from each of them in terms of revenue and ridership.
Questions, Council? Councilor Reese?
Thank you. With options two and three that require the additional buses, I recall from our previous conversation when we were talking about the Southern Park route, that we couldn't increase capacity because we needed another bus. And we couldn't do that until we actually built a new transit center. How long might that process take? I mean, if we said today, for example, do I want to go with option two, when realistically could you implement that, assuming you've got budget okay from your end?
Yeah, it's a great question. So through the chair, previously, I know that our team has been working very closely with District of Squamish staff around options for an interim solution to our capacity constraints with the facility right now. So it is true, we are currently at capacity with our existing facility. And when we went through the expansion planning process last year for this 1,400 hours, we didn't, we hadn't confirmed that there would be that interim solution available. But since then, that additional work has been done. I think it's for up to five buses potentially that we might be able to accommodate through an alternative solution. So it is a variable that needs to be considered through this process. We'll still need to continue to work with local staff to find what that exact solution would be. But yeah, if it was council's direction for us to look at options two or three, that would be one of those considerations that we would have to iron out and make sure we find a solution for.
But it sounds like then you're not looking to build necessarily right away a new building. You might be able to accommodate it within one year or two years?
Yeah, it's a great question. So we would have that potential for say up to five vehicles. And at that point, we'd be capped until we had that new facility completed. And that may not, that could be multiple years down the road. So one, an additional consideration is three to four buses. That would take up the majority of that capacity for that interim solution. And so that may limit what options the district may have to improve service elsewhere in the community over the next several years.
Is that five buses total or five additional buses?
To the chair, five additional buses. And the timeline of fall 2020 for options two or three should be achievable with the interim facility. So we wouldn't have to wait any longer than we would need to wait anyways, as long as everything goes as planned with the interim facility.
Councilor Megan?
I think you had some discussion around this last time, but I can't remember the numbers. How we or would we consider an EV bus? And just to provide some context around that question, I'm thinking, you know, as we're planning for facilities, I'm presuming the facility needs might be quite different if we're planning for EV versus gas buses. And also, you know, one of our goals may be to increase ridership. Another goal may be to incentivize the EV industry and support that in BC. And so maybe that's the reason why we might be willing to spend a bit more on such costs if it was more. And so just wondering if you could speak to how much discretion we have to direct that and what BC Transit is thinking is on that.
Sure, that's a great question. Through the chair, BC Transit is looking at electric buses currently. We have a trial bus in Victoria right now. And we're in that experimental phase where we're trying to identify what are the constraints and costs and considerations with transitioning in that direction? Because there are some specific operational challenges with operating electric vehicles as opposed to fuel vehicles. So it's definitely something that we're looking at for into the future. In terms of responding to this specific question, I think that, I think that's still to be determined based on further discussion. But I think that if that was District of Squamish's desire, we could certainly be bringing that back to our team to let them know that that is an interest. And we can continue to update council as to that process as time we're to move forward.
And so just to clarify then, we couldn't demand an EV. We'd have to request one and then see where that went. Is that sort of how things work?
Through the chair, that's a great question. And I'm not sure that I have the full answer for that because I'm not fully involved in that process myself. But we could certainly ask our organization where we're at in terms of that project and provide some more information to local staff to bring back to council.
To the chair. So I have had some conversations with Mr. Chatter, who's the senior. What was her title? Relations about electric buses. And her thinking with that, we can plan for them in the long term facility, so the larger facility. So probably not for these interim buses, but for that future, for that future facility. I'll just look into having the infrastructure in place in that facility to allow for that.
Councilor Stoner?
I have a question about the day pass onboard and the loss of transfers. So if I was trying to get from Brackendale to the Squamish Hospital and I had to get off one bus and onto another, it's now going to cost. off one bus onto another, it's now going to cost me $4 instead of $2?
That's correct. Yes, through the chair, that would be the, what would happen. What we do see is, the majority of trips are two ways, and thereby, most people would need to have that alternative for any bus.
So my follow-up question is, if we're moving towards TAP technology, why would we not just look at trip distance as part of a fare structure or trip time?
Right, so through the chair, what we've seen from best practices and the industry trend in general is going towards a simplified fare structure. So moving away from anything that's sort of vague or not necessarily clear exactly what you're paying every time you get on the bus. So I know that there are conversations that revolve around the distance-based fares as you're speaking to, but in general, it seems as though what we want to do is make it approachable and easy to understand what you're paying for, what you're getting out of your transit fare.
Councilor French?
I'd like to go back to the interim facility, and I anticipate that maybe this is a different conversation for another day. If you're able to share more, I'd love to hear it.
I can probably speak to that a little bit, to the chair. So the concept for an interim facility is that the operator of PW Transit would need to lease some space to park the additional vehicles, so that space would be relatively close to the current facility. And then within their building, they have one toll bay, and then they have a bit of space. We might be able to upgrade that space into sort of a partial second bay, so we can do some tax maintenance in that second area. So that's the general idea.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Pegg?
Do you have any analysis on the cost to collect these fares, especially as we're changing? Because I, you know, I get the revenue, it's $2 per trip, or that's what we're talking about possibly. But it's not clear to me, I mean, are you spending $1.50 to do the accounting, to train people how to use their phone and get it installed, and to futz around while they're getting on the bus and trying to figure out how to pay and all that? And so we're really only seeing 50 cents of that fare, and the cost benefit of charging a fare is much diminished.
So through the chair, we don't necessarily have the granular detail for the District of Squamish. We provide the fare products that are used for the prepaid fares, so that would come through your annual marketing budget as determined. But in terms of the collection of cash and processing and depositing of that, those costs will be under the discretion of the District of Squamish, because all fare revenue that's collected on buses will be ownership of the District of Squamish.
So I do know the cost for the collection of cash, it works out to about $700 a month for that. Breaks does that for us. I can't speak though to the new fare technology and have the cost of installing that, and we do that.
Right.
These transits do.
We haven't selected the vendor.
No. So it is a capital project, so a lot of the upfront costs in terms of installation and all that would be covered under the capital budget. In terms of the ongoing administration costs, that'll just be dependent on what vendors selected and what their costs would be.
Good. Did I see your hand, Councilor Haver?
In the paper you provided, it talks about when we go to free fares, that the cost is probably might be higher, but the per rider cost can go down.
That was the initial paper that I included in the staff report, and I had a chance to read that. That was that, that's what they suggested can be the case, individual cost per rider could go down.
Right.
Because you have more riders.
We have more riders, so for communities where it's not a massive jump to provide free fares, that actually you're creating a more efficient transit system because your cost per rider comes down because you're higher ridership. And I was just wondering if we've done any analysis on these options with that in mind?
That's a great question. So what I would say is that if you just look at it in terms of the total cost of the system, if you're increasing ridership, you're definitely going to see lower cost per ride. Once you take into account the lost revenue though, that's a good question. We didn't do that level of analysis. I'm sure we could do a quick back-of-the-envelope calculation.
So just from the staff report, our total local government share is about 1.49. And so if options two and three, we're bumping that up to just below two and then two. Is that, I'm just, is that the right number that I'm looking at?
Yeah. So our total local government share is about that. That was from the 2018, I think, base. It's a little higher now.
It goes up 800 or 900,000-ish.
I'm assuming those numbers are our municipal share or those are the total?
Those are.
The total local government.
Local government share.
Yeah, that doesn't include the provincial share.
That's amazing.
Because we get all very.
2.31. I think, just from a high level, I think probably given the increased cost, like the additional service that would be required, I think that that may not hold in this case when you just look at the numbers from a high level. We could certainly look at it and bring it back to council though at a later date to give you the exact number, if that was, if you felt that would be helpful.
I thought it was interesting that Whistler went to just a weekend in the summer kind of model rather than an across-the- floor free fares. Councilor Haver?
Thank you. Talking about the increased ridership on free fares, how is that calculated without ticket being purchased, or, and some of the benefit of the free fares, you can get on whichever door whenever you want? So how is that, and earlier we, with the account-based stuff, we're talking about tracking more specifically. There seems to be, can you fill that gap?
So through the chair, I mean, I think if the decision were to go to a free fare, we'd have to determine how that would be administered, whether it be a true, you can step on the bus and that's all you have to do, or do we want people still validating some type of fare to get on the bus? So whether it be they have, have the app that we'd be looking to introduce as a part of the new fare collection technology, and using that to validate a fare coming onboard. In terms of the calculations, this is all based on budgeted amounts, and then doing some elasticity analysis, and looking at the trends of what we've observed in other systems.
So how, and to get those numbers out of Whistler, what are they currently using for that tracking? Just something that's close to us and we're trying to sort of pull some knowledge from, but how are they tracking that? That maybe was a 20% increase or 26%?
Yeah, so that's done through our current fare collection technology. There's an agreement with the transit operators and the operating company that the operators would, through the technology, press a key every time someone comes onboard, so we can track the trends that way.
Councilor Stoner, then, Councilor Pegg?
So I'm curious, under option two, obviously that's where we see the biggest impact on projected total ridership. And that's obviously considering that age bracket are the ones that we have most elasticity around actually getting them onboard. My question is around what are the conversations that are had with school district 48 and the alignment of bus times with school bells, and where do the school buses actually come into all of this? There's been a lot of talk around that town, so I just have a little quick indication.
Yeah, great question. So through the chair, every time we reschedule the system, we make sure to reconfirm with all the schools what their bell times are, and we just do our best to accommodate meeting as many of those bell times as possible within the constraints of the system. Regarding the actual school busing piece, I would have to defer to local staff on that piece.
It's a very huge, it's a very large challenge for the school district, because there are two different unions involved, and so it's not an easy thing to try to merge those two systems. I think, I mean, there are maybe some options that we can still keep in the back of our minds, like potentially the school district doesn't have buses any longer and helps support the public service, that might be one option. I have no idea if there's any interest from the other side on that at all or not.
And how many of the local schools are serviced by a school bus?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I believe they all are to some degree. It's got to do with the distance to the school, so if the students are arriving to that school from outside of that distance, then they receive school bus service. Although actually, it's such a, carefully, Highlands don't take head school bus service. So yeah, sorry, I don't have a full answer on that.
That's fair. Councilor Pegg, and then Councilor Rice?
So I understand that parking in lieu is a one-time fee for a space, but what are we currently charging for that? And then, do you have any sense of, you know, last year we had 1,000 parking spots where the development go through, and developers chose to do parking in lieu on 20%. Like, do we have that sense?
In terms of the, the amount per unit is $15,000. We don't get a lot of cash in lieu. It's probably at best dozens. We, Ms. Matthews isn't here to know what the, what the amount in cash in lieu reserve was, but it was not, I don't believe, 600,000 comes to mind. So it's, we don't collect a lot of cash in lieu, mostly for commercial or perhaps for variances, dozens, not hundreds of stores.
Councilor Rice and Councilor French?
So, looking at this, right now, bus passes are free for children up to age 12. Does it go beyond that for students, or the older students would then pay the fare? So if we wanted to go start moving from option one to option two, for example, would we have to just make the big jump that you show on the graph there? Or could we say, this year we're going to age 13, next year to age 14, next year to age 15? And the reason I say that is because we're just going through a budget process, and we have these types of decisions where it's very often a lot easier to phase things in as opposed to just have one big spike in the budget. I mean, $500,000 is practically by itself a 2% increase in taxes, so that's a big bite. But if you do it over three years, for example, it's smaller and it's easy, easier for the taxpayer to adjust to that if they do it in smaller increments. So I'm wondering about options that we might have around that. I mean, at some point, I guess you get new bus number one, and at another point, you get new bus number two, and is there any kind of a phasing program we could somehow lay into this?
Sure. So through the chair, I think there becomes challenges in terms of administering that program, looking at if, if you're going from age 13 year, one year to age 14 the next year, then you're looking at a pretty vague age range, and in terms of enforcing that on the bus, that becomes, could potentially become problematic, in terms of, is this student age 14 or 13 or what have you? It creates a bit of a vague situation. So we try and keep it so that it's a pretty clear age range that's relatively identifiable, because we don't want to put operators in that situation.
Wouldn't you sort it out when you give the passes?
There's no passes.
There's no passes, no.
Oh, they just get them.
Yeah.
So even now, you've got that issue then?
Correct.
12 and 13?
Correct, yes.
Anecdotally, Dora and I sat down with some of the bus drivers earlier this year, and they said that it's one thing that they won't enforce. And whether or not, not all of our young people are honest, and so they know there's older kids getting on the bus, and they just say, "I'm 12." And bus drivers, it's not their job to argue with that, but they know that there are certain young people that are abusing the system already. So to sort of do an incremental, so actually to jump to 18 makes their lives easier in a certain sense, unless we require kids to show a student card or something, but I don't even think they do that anymore at schools, so.
The other option would be to administer passes, as you had thought before, but then that just becomes an administrative challenge in terms of sending new passes every month to these students, and having some sort of check and balance and control.
Okay, Councilor French, then, Councilor Haver?
With the move to technology as payment method, mobile application, could customers use the app in another community seamlessly that offers DC Transit Service?
Through the chair, correct, they would be able to. They would have to select the transit system that they're in, but in theory, someone could move across the province and use the same app in any system.
Not necessarily Metro Van, where Compass is operating?
We will look to integrate with them at some point, but that will be a little phase. Well, our first, our first challenge is to get it across provinces quickly, as soon as possible.
What, Councilor Haver?
Thank you. And looking at Councilor Rice's sort of phasing-in plan, I think that there's, I mean, there's obviously options, there's many options, and we broke it down into these three. But does a reduction of fare have similar effects to just being free? Because I know some of it's just handling of the money, and it's a hassle, and some of it's actually a cost barrier, and I was thinking, maybe we could go to cheaper, you know, the thought is a dollar for students, like $2 up to 18. There's some sort of way to, again, to get there, but having the phasing on is sort of based on that one-year information.
Right, well, so through the chair, again, just speaking to our general strategy is we want to have things as clean and consistent as possible. So introducing different fare types for different demographics kind of muddies the water in that regard, so that would not be what our recommendation would be. It is possible, it is at the discretion of the District of Squamish how fares are set, but it could present challenges in terms of administering and making transit easy and approachable to use.
Sort of, but how about the impact on, I suppose it's the impact and the change of rate versus without it being zero? Like, does that, if overall we were to cut all the rates in half, does that have a similar effect to, in one of these options, or is the elimination what really makes a jump? Because that's what makes it a jump. I get free is great, but, you know, does being 50% off in this case, say, have a similar effect? And I didn't see any representation of course, I wasn't sure of that.
It would be a similar effect, yes. It's actually, what we see is this decline curve, the steep of the discount, there's actually less of an increase in ridership. So you could see similar effects if you were to decrease fares, yes. Not necessarily to the same scale or extent, but yes.
Okay, I put myself on the list in there about Councilor Stoner and Councilor Anderson. In the staff report, just want to clarify, it says, staff are recommending proceeding with option one for the conventional service. Financial impacts of option two or three are large, and the impact the district's ability to proceed with other priorities. So I'm just curious what those other priorities are.
Sure. So there's priorities both for transit, and then there's also other bigger priorities, depending on what your goals are with free transit. Speaking just of transit though, if we decide to make transit free, then we have to make sure, probably peak time services, we're going to have to add our extra service hours, which limits our ability to do other kinds of transit expansions. So for example, Ellis Lake or making the South Parks routes go for longer, those types of things wouldn't be possible if we, unless we wanted to spend even more money, we'd be putting our resources into servicing the additional ridership. And from a bigger picture perspective, if the goal of free transit is to, let's say, create mode shift, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, I'm not sure what council's absolute goal is for this, but if that's the case, then we don't know absolutely at this time that that is the best way to spend our money, if the goal is to reduce, let's say, greenhouse gases.
Thank you. Councilor Stoner?
Billy, I have something else in the staff report, so I appreciate all the detailed analysis that's gone into the fare review, and I think it's helpful to kind of mull it over, but there was something in there with regards to kind of this balancing act between, is this really the right approach to take to get to where it is that we want to go? And I think what we're trying, what my intention or interest here is, how do we get more people on a bus? How would we encourage more people to take the bus? And I think one of the biggest challenges that I hear about our transit system is, it's infrequent and it's unreliable in terms of timing. And I'm looking, looking at the schedules, even like there's very large gouts from 8:20 in the evening till 10:10 at night, like you can't get anywhere in this town. twenty in the evening till ten ten at night, like you can't get anywhere in this town between eight thirty and ten, which is when most people are trying to get home and get to bed. Um, so my inclination at this point is, is to hold off on, on going towards free fares and, and do a little bit more of a thorough review of how can we actually achieve that goal of getting more people on the bus? And that might be accelerating, um, the increase in service perhaps more so than necessarily fare.
Uh, Council Anderson.
Yes, Mayor Elliott has referred to the other priorities, that is, options two or three would, uh, impact other potential priorities. I would suggest that one of those is other active transportation investments that could complement or in fact replace bus service. I, for example, live in a neighborhood where the main clientele for the B C Transit is young people going to school. And, uh, we don't have, between my neighborhood and the school, adequate bike paths or pedestrian routes, so there's an issue of, of trade-offs there or choices to make. But my question actually is what is following in the report? It refers to public consultation, the need for public consultation, but, once we decide to consider option one or two. Would that public consultation, uh, be undertaken by B C Transit or by the district, considering that there's these trade-offs to make with our active transportation investments? And to ask the public about those trade-offs?
Through the chair, we haven't actually, uh, considered what the public consultation would look like yet, uh, so oftentimes when we are doing consultation related to like the transit, we do work directly with B C Transit on that, um, so I would imagine they would at very least be involved on this one. Um, if we wanted to ask some bigger questions about active transportation at the same time, then we could probably expand that to do both.
Okay.
Um, Kevin, Michael, it's time, you haven't even spoken to the service expansion piece yet. Um, and so, um, we've explored fare changes, um, and so I'm, I'm looking for some direction here from council. Um, is there a motion someone wants to put forward? Their staff recommendation is to stay with option one, which is to align with the day pass on board program, move away from transfers, but not go to increasing the free fare option at this time. Council race?
I'll move option one.
Second. Council Anderson.
Can I speak to the point?
Yes.
Um, and I tend to agree with the comment that Council Stoner made. I think, um, given the numbers, um, we are better off in the short term to put our money into more buses and increase service. Uh, and for me, from what I hear, and I guess I'm a lean person, not an expert in this, the more frequent and the more regular the service is, uh, and more reliable, uh, the better chance you have of changing habits. And so I don't think the fares are things that are necessarily going to determine the numbers as much as that might be. It's really a fundamental shift in how people go through their lives that we're after, uh, and, and I'm not sure that two dollars a trip is the thing that's going to change or make that change for them. So I would be inclined to put the resources that we have, uh, into a more frequent service and raise the level of service. I'm encouraged to know that we have the ability to add buses because I remember from the discussion we had about the Southern Loop, which is not quite on the table, but nevertheless, the possibilities of extending it to Britannia and so forth, uh, that's in my mind not a 2019 project, but is certainly something to consider for 2020, uh, and to start adding more loops and expand that ridership hopefully. So, uh, so I think that's a better place for our resources to go. These are very significant numbers for a budget for sure, but I would rather see them go in that direction.
Anybody else want to comment on that motion? Council team?
I'll be supporting the motion, um, but just to reiterate, some concern around, uh, falling in line with the day pass on board and the impact that that might have with one-way tricks and the doubling of fares, um, I don't know if they're working out a key to stop that, but, um, if we can just be cognizant of that and make informed in the impact it might have on some folks, um, I'm aware of that might.
The one piece of this that, um, I'm not sure, sort of in the why bother category is the handy dart. So we're talking about six hundred forty-four dollars of revenue to outline it and, and Ryan, you spoke about fairness in the system, but most handy dart riders are on fixed income and that's not necessarily the case. I'm making that assumption for the conventional system, but maybe you can tell me that's a false assumption. So I'm just, for six hundred forty-four dollars for the revenue, wouldn't we try and keep handy darts? And I think this was where council landed the last time, was that just the revenue increase is so small, what's the point?
Uh, I believe last time we didn't actually discuss handy dart, which is why it wasn't changed last time, uh, there is some argument to just be consistent across the board, it's just simple, it's easy to me.
Yeah, to second, uh, that point, um, I picked up the process after the decision that had been made last time and, uh, we got to the point of implementing it and then realizing that it hadn't been addressed. So, um, the recommendation is simply for alignment's sake, uh, it is a minimal impact, um, and if it's at the discretion of the district, then we wouldn't object to having that fare being lower still. Um, it's, it's simply just, again, trying to make it consistent and, um, uh, easy to understand.
Council.
With that in mind, would you want the motion slightly amended?
Uh, that would be up to you, it's your motion, cause I don't think mine's a friendly, I think it's a change, so.
Well, I'll make the motion, except for, you know, leading handed or as is, if that's okay with the segment.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Any more comments? Council.
Yeah, I'll be supporting this, this motion, but as we go forward and reset our, our targets and our strategic plan around greenhouse gas and, uh, and other, other pieces there, um, it's, it's a good exercise to know what, what price tag that, that comes with, and this may be something that, that we want to, that we circle back to and we end up going all the way through, but I don't think now's the, the time to, uh, to do that without the fulsome understanding of impacts that it's, that it's going to have. Um, we see the budget impacts, but without knowing that that's actually the best way to spend that money, uh, option one is the, is the way at this time, I think.
Okay, Council.
Um, I will be supporting this. I, I think, uh, I do feel that, uh, free fares for all has a lot of value, uh, in terms of just simplification and reducing some of the collection costs. I, I do worry about the equity piece, which sort of touched on a little bit, the handy dart, um, and I think there's an opportunity for us to do something there, especially as an affluent community. I don't think it's out of line to look to the taxpayer in general and presumably those with a little more affluence to help support those without, uh, and I think that could be a good way to do that. However, again, I, I do think in the short term, the bigger bank our block is getting, um, uh, more frequent service, so I'm happy to support that, but I, I would hope to, over the coming year, to have discussions about, um, fares again.
Okay, uh, call the question, hold on a favor, close motion carries. Um, I want to put forward a resolution, um, that, uh, we ask staff at B C Transit to actually, uh, look at the option of, um, free summer weekends, uh, and bring that back in the summer for discussion. I think that's what you said, maybe by in July, we have another opportunity to put this.
Definitely, yeah, so through the three-year expansion planning process, there will be the, the opportunity to look at next year's expansion in the following three years, and it could be essentially an option to discuss that, that thought.
We would be looking at following summer, though not.
Oh, yeah, not the summer, no, no, no. Don't you worry. Not this summer. No, looking at 2020, um, and the reason for that is that, that would also be this time we'd be looking at expanding the Southern Parks potentially with a, under the bus, and there's a way that we could actually just promote, um, on those busy summer weekends, less people driving downtown or less people driving to those parks. Um, so I'd like to see the impact of that. If someone wants to second that, second by Council Stoner. Hopefully we don't need too much discussion on that. Call the question, hold on a favor, close motion carries. Thanks. Hey, how about a little bit of service expansion?
Okay, so thank, thank you again for, uh, that fulsome discussion that we had around fares. Uh, so based off our discussion in January, uh, we present council with a proposed list of potential expansion opportunities, uh, just because we wanted to give council the opportunity to provide some feedback, kind of with more time for us to potentially respond to any, any requests of changes at that time. Um, and so what we did is based off of that discussion, uh, we worked with local staff to further refine those options we presented, um, for example, we were exploring one of the options to expand service to the, the seniors facility, uh, for example, and, and what we actually found is that the roadways are too narrow to actually serve with a bus right now. Um, so although that was one of the things we were hoping to accomplish with this expansion, uh, some additional work would need to be done if that were a priority for council in the future around how we could make that happen, whether it be, uh, an infrastructure piece or a parking regulation piece. So based off of that refinement, the list of expansion options that we've identified as part of this proposed service change plan, to utilize those fourteen hundred hours council approved last summer, uh, first of all, to provide an earlier trip on the Route Two Highlands to sort of meet a seven AM shift start time and to meet with the Squamish Connector Service, uh, connects on down to Vancouver. Currently, the Route Two starts later in the morning than any of the other services, uh, currently available within the community. So this would just provide that equity to members within the Highlands community, provide that same span of service, uh, that is available in Rockendale and, and Valley Cliff. Uh, we'd also be recommending one additional evening trip on the Route Nine Quest University as part of our fall 2018 expansion. One of the key goals, uh, based on previous direction from council was to achieve twenty-minute, uh, service frequency along your core transit network from seven AM to seven PM. Uh, but due to some of the other, uh, goals that emerged through that scheduling process, uh, we were only able to accomplish seven AM to six PM. So this would bring that, uh, full seven AM to seven PM twenty-minute service goal to, to completion. Also, there's an option to look at improving weekend service to Quest University. Uh, currently on the weekends, that's provided by the Route Two, and currently only every second or third trip, uh, continues up to Quest University, so there's often a couple, couple hour gaps, uh, in the schedule to that area. So, uh, that is one option that we're, we've put forward into the, the proposed service change plan as well. Uh, we're looking to modify the existing routing for the Route Four Garibaldi Express to serve the Business Park area. Uh, what we found through preliminary analysis is that that new service is performing lower than we hoped that it would, it would perform, and through discussions with the local operating company who have been hearing a lot from the public, uh, that was brought forward as a recommendation to, to improve access, uh, for, for people who currently aren't using that service but may want to, that area. Uh, additionally, there's a number of service gaps, uh, on your Routes One, Two and Three at certain times of the day, they just miss certain aspects of the routing. So we're proposing wherever feasible to fill in those service gaps, and I've got a, a later slide that, that shows that in a little more detail. Uh, and then finally, we'd be looking to reduce some of those Route One, Two combined trips that you currently provide, sort of in the later evenings, uh, that create those two-hour gaps, for example, in the schedule, and replace those with, with individual trips on the Route One and the Route Two. Uh, currently, those combined trips, they're a very efficient way of serving a large area at a lower cost, but what it means is, is some pretty significant inconveniences to some of the existing riders. Um, and actually, I, I arrived in the community last night and I, I rode the eight twenty combined trip, and so I was talking to some of the passengers and just trying to get their feedback and how they use the, the service in the system, and, and they seemed pretty excited about that possibility. So, you know, someone lives in the Highlands and whenever she goes into town that night, she's got to go all the way up through Rockendale and back down. So, um, that, that's something that we'd be looking to, to start to move towards reducing and providing more convenient service in, in the off-peak hours. And, so I've just kind of provided an additional slide showing our proposed routing change for the Route Four Garibaldi Express. So currently it's providing express service between, uh, the Tantalus Neighborhood, uh, Garibaldi Village, and then it just cuts along the highway directly to downtown. And what we're finding is that there's, there's a limited market that's looking for that, uh, that express service right now. So we're just trying to provide still an express type service, but while still increasing access to a, an important, uh, destination within the community in hopes of improving ridership on that service. Uh, and the service gaps on the Routes One, Two and Three I was talking about, you can kind of see here, I've, I've paced with the schedule and outlined, uh, on the various routes where you currently have gaps in your service. Uh, so keep in mind, some of these are within the peak periods, so we don't have an expansion bus, so we're proposing that we look into that as an option, but it could be possible that due to other constraints, we're not able to accomplish the peak pieces, but, uh, we'll certainly see what's possible and, and do our best to fill in those service gaps, as per council's direction.
So just for clarity, right now, that's not a guarantee?
Uh, it, it's not.
Of the fourteen hundred hours?
It's, it's not a hundred percent guarantee, uh, like, so for example, if, if council said we want you to accomplish this no matter what, what that might mean is that there might provide some challenges in terms of serving certain school bell times, which we know are a, a large driver of ridership, um, as well, it could have an impact on the headways currently. It, it likely will have a slight impact, but through working with staff, uh, we hope to sort of assess the, the trade-offs between those different options and just make sure we're making the right decision for the community, uh, in light of all of those, those various trade-offs.
So if we can accomplish the service gaps, where would you allocate those hours?
Um, sorry, just to clarify, um, I believe, so we, we absolutely can accomplish it for any of the gaps that are not peak. Uh, it's only the peak ones that could be a problem, like, which I know.
Also, just to speak to that, that this particular service option, it, it doesn't have a lot of service hours associated with it, so if we, for example, weren't able to do peaks, it might literally be about a fifty-hour piece that we'd be working with. So, uh, it's possible that it might, the expansion might be thirteen hundred fifty hours, and it's something that through a future expansion, we could roll those resources in with, uh, with future expansion and look how to use those resources most effectively pending further council, uh, direction. So in terms of next steps for this project, uh, pending council approval, we can go directly into the scheduling process. Uh, just to speak to sort of project timelines, we do require quite a bit of time. Uh, we, we give our scheduling team about three months for any rescheduling process. It, it can be complex, it's got to go through an internal review process, and as well, once we've gone through the internal review, it goes out to local staff for that second set of eyes as well. And sometimes there can be some back and forth and it, it can take quite a bit of time. Um, and then as well, we allow three months for our marketing team to restructure the new Riders Guide, uh, make any changes associated there. Uh, and, and I, I know through previous discussions, it, it can seem like that that's a long process. Um, and so, uh, every time that we come forward to council, I, I think it's worthwhile reiterating that we provide services to the whole province outside of Metro Vancouver, and particularly for a September service change, we've got sometimes like thirty to forty service changes and, you know, ten plus service expansions. We're a very lean organization as well. Uh, I think we've got seven planners, five schedulers and four marketing coordinators, so it's just, even though it might not take three months for any one project, when you look at the, the sheer volume from the whole province, that's kind of the, the rationale for, for why we allow that timeline for those, those project pieces. So pending the, uh, completion of the new Riders Guide in, in August, uh, we'd be making any final bus stop signage updates, uh, and then, uh, we'd be implementing the service September third and just monitor performance from there and, and see what future changes might be required, uh, through that process.
Council Stoner?
Um, so for the proposed rerouting of, uh, number four and going into the Business Park, I'm just curious if there was any consideration of routing through Brennan Park and then down Water's Lane path to Adventure Center to downtown?
Through the chair, so we did consider that, in fact, the, there was some conversations with some of the bus drivers, and this is how this all came up to be actually about. Um, their feeling was that the Brennan Park option was not as important as the, as the Business Park. So, if, based on their advice, that's where we.
Yeah, it was interesting, it was that equity issue of that a lot of people shop at Walmart and needed to get that regardless of what part of town, and so they felt that we were missing, we were making it difficult for those people not providing that service through the Business Park. But Council Stoner's part, you go past Brennan Park, down Water's Lane and out. It's no longer an express. Anyway, uh, I saw a hand.
Yes. The ridership for Route Three Valley Cliff proposed expansion, uh, I see twenty-odd routes here through the day, most of them have one person. It's a very low ridership. It's a very low ridership on that route. It'd be nice to increase it, the ridership, because we've got the hospital and Polton House with notorious parking problems. But my question is, how are you monitoring that ridership and its potential growth? As I say, for most of the days, one at best, two people on that bus.
That's a great question. So through the chair, our technology is in the process of changing right now, so what we've used historically to monitor performance may be changing in the near future. So previously, we've been using the revenue model to keep track of sort of system-level ridership. In terms of ridership for individual routes, we've been using our GFI technology, which is sort of our Fairbox technology. So, but that being said, moving forward, we have been installing automated passenger counter units on a number of our buses within the Squamish system, and we're actually starting to see some of that ridership information come in. So we're in the process of validating the validity of that information right now, and we're hopeful that moving forward, we're going to be able to use that more nuanced information to help inform council of performance changes in the system and also to provide more discrete recommendations for improving the transit system moving forward.
Paula?
Yes, a related question on that particular route. Within the next three to five years, we'll have the Scott Crescent development underway. And I know that some preliminary planning has been done, but that could mean changes for that route. How far ahead do you need to look to make those? Are you already taking this into account in your planning? There's also waterfront landing. I see on page 28 of 63 in our package here, there isn't any future network map for the waterfront landing development either. I'm just looking, are we looking three years ahead? Where are we at in this plan?
That's a great question. So as well, through the chair, we have a program, it's the Development Referrals Program. And so through the District of Squamish, they send us all of their development permit applications, and we're able to review that and provide feedback from a transit perspective. So I've actually worked very close to the door around both the waterfront landing and the Scott Crescent development as well. And so it is a bit challenging because currently we have the one route, and we have had some discussions around how we would be able to serve both of those communities, given the constraints of the planned road networks as well. So it's definitely something that we are looking to the future for. I think, and that's a great question. So is that something that we should be earmarking funds for soon, or is this something that we have to do within our existing funding envelope? So I want to thank you for that question, because it's a great question. But yeah, we have looked at it, we're going to continue to look at it, and I think as those developments get closer to completion, we'll definitely be working with local staff to look at options to serve those neighborhoods.
Great. I believe on waterfront landing, the developer has to provide bus service for students, so it was a classic.
I believe that's correct. The longer-term one is sort of a little bit competition on the bridge.
Yeah.
Making it easy to get in and out.
Counselor Knight, you all, and then Counselor Frin.
So over the last hour, it's been mentioned a few times the importance of increasing ridership as sort of a primary goal, and I just wanted to clarify that. For me, I'm not sure that's the goal. I'm thinking the goals are to reduce the reliance on single occupancy vehicles and then two, to reduce barriers for those that want to get around the town. And I think we are assuming that at least at the present time, increasing ridership on buses may be the best way to do that, but I just hope that we don't lose sight of that's not the actual goal. The actual goal are, I think, these broader things of reducing the single occupancy vehicles and reducing barriers to transit.
I absolutely agree 100% that ridership alone is not necessarily a goal. I mean, it could be, but here, creating that mode shift is like the logical variable.
Counselor Frin?
I'm going to go back to specific. In the fall, during the election process, I heard about the removal of a bus stop that was going toward the Squamish Nation at, I think it's, no. And as any, I know it's a routing thing, there was bell time, and there's a lot going on. And how does that, those demands for that feedback get through to the scheduling process? I saw filling in polls, but I didn't see moving that back in, nor did I see expansion moving closer to some of those areas that are important to Squamish Nation, whether they're deeper into Rockendale or East Tukai. And there's a slower loop. Those are the ones that come to mind.
That's a great question. So through the chair, I think that if that was council's direction, they'd like to explore those options, we'd be happy to look into it, but I think we just need some formal direction. Regarding the Squamish Nation, we have actually been working with MOTI through their Minor Veteraments Improvement Program to try to look at establishing some highway bus stops that would potentially be used on the Route 5. And as well, if and/or when interregional service were to become available, that it could be accessible to that service as well. There are some challenges with one of those bus stops due to the hydro easement, and there's a couple other factors. But we're continuing to kind of push the ministry around trying to get those options looked into further. But yeah, regarding how the process for us to look into it, we would just need council's Perhaps it could be a good conversation to have as part of our future expansion discussion this summer.
Do you believe it's too late to do that in this 1,400 hour?
I can just add, I'm not answering that specific question, but just adding to the previous question. So my understanding is before my time, before Levi's time at least, with the previous stop at Totem Hall, was that it was part of the Valley Cliff route, and it had that portion of trips with extremely low ridership, and that is why it was eliminated. And so I guess we'd have to have a pretty good rationale to put that back in, maybe even require some consultation to determine what the demands for that route are, because it wasn't functioning well, which is why we eliminated it prior to being here.
Yeah, I mean, the ridership and the use of the stop is dependent on some of the other variables, as you know, where the connectivity maybe wasn't there to get across or what, any number of things. So I'm hesitant to say that we should, you know, push to get that one back in because it won't work now, but in future, I definitely want, that seems a part of our expansion, is sort of that connectivity between those important places in Squamish Nation. I don't know if I, were we looking for a specific motion there? Were we going to defer that for the?
No, we need a motion of council to direct transit to study these things, so either in with this expansion or bring back for future expansion.
Maybe just add one more thing. So we are looking to update our transit future plan within the next year or two. So that could be a great opportunity as well, first to look holistically at the whole system and how maybe we could best integrate that service in from an efficiency perspective while also promoting access. If we are going to be providing that interregional service, then it's going to be running up and down that corridor. That may be the most effective way to serve that region. So I think that, you know, given the regional desire for that service, you know, that could be a way to make, meet multiple needs, I guess, within an existing or future budget. Yeah, just to be efficient with our resources.
I'm trying to work off assumptions, but I'm going to assume that the first, the reason to put that stop there in the first place was that there was some, when that route was added, there was some desire to have there from Squamish Nation, which I'm assuming. Now we've removed it, and I've heard at least from one person that misses it, and it might have been the only person that admitted that, maybe the only person having used that stop at that time. But it seems like that's the low-hanging fruit. We're talking about, it's like 200 meters between traffic lights and the highway. It's a loop through, but I know it doesn't necessarily fit here, so I don't know if we should push for that particular one, because it's right there, and it's not an extra, it's not an extra expansion as it went to, like, a regional thing, it's very physically close. Or if we wait, I just, those timelines, and I appreciate taking time to implement these things, which is why I'm mulling this over right now, so that we're a year out or a year and a half out, which would be the tightest timeline I'm hearing, rather than a year and a half out from being a year and a half out. That's just where the next phase is, so.
Right, I might let you mull for a second.
Okay, do that.
Counselor Reese?
Yeah, thank you. It's just, I was part of the council that actually pulled back from that service, and my recollection isn't perfect on that, but I do recall it was low ridership, and we did it as part of reallocating resources. And so we increased service in some other area in the system with the savings that we got from not going down to that particular stop. So it would take, once again, I'm not the expert. I mean, if we wanted to extend the service there, I think we'd have to look and see what the effect would be on the rest of the system. I'm not sure it's that simple, because we could retake a whole bunch of things at that time.
All right, Counselor Frin, speed this up.
So what is our capacity at this point to include a Squamish Nation stop in the park, the summer park service, the park service? And I understand that is a summer service, but if ridership turns out to be high for us, then to reasonably quickly keep that piece of it going forward after the summer park service turns in.
Through the chair, I think it speaks to the same kind of process that, once the Route 5 disappears for the fall, the only existing service would be if we get that interregional service in that would be serving that corridor. If there was an alternative approach desired to serve that area, it would probably be through an adjustment to the existing Route 3, which was previously what served that route. And likely what that would mean is it would reduce the headways for that service. So if, say, it has an extra five minutes, you'd have an extra five minutes between each trip. And that could be how it could be accommodated with the local network. Once again, keeping in mind that there's those trade-offs with waterfront landing, Scott's Crescent, so we probably want to look at that holistically in light of all those other proposed or new developments that are coming down the pipeline as well, how we can integrate into that.
So, I mean, there's an issue of access and equity, and so I think if there was a resolution, I think it's about incorporating into our next phase of planning, access and equity for Squamish Nation reserves, not just stops. But as you say, Counselor Harper, it's the Rockendale reaching part of, so I think we need to be thinking about that. So I'll put that forward as a resolution for our next go-round of grades. I moved it. You want to second me?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Frin. All those in favor? Both motion carries. Thank you. One of the things that I just wanted to point out is that your MOU still has March 20 as the 1,400 hour increase. Do you need to update that to September 2018?
We can't update the MOU at this point. The MOU is assigned as it is. We've just changed the timelines now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And also, when do we get to talk about 2020 and 2021 again?
2020, 2021. So these guys will be coming back to council in spring or early summer, I believe, to, with the three-year expansion MOU, so that's one we will discuss in a few years.
Okay.
It would, just to speak to that as well, if there's any specific direction the council would like to see included in that first discussion, I mean, we would be happy to receive that direction now as well, and that can help us better shape what we're going to bring forward as sort of a preliminary consideration.
Yeah.
Could streamline that for us.
So if I think about what I've heard today, Levi, and from previous conversations, is one, expanding Route 5, the summer service, and potentially down to Britannia, so we need a bus for that. The equity piece about including their reserves and considering those in our routing. And also, right now, in MOU 2020, 2021, only talks about improving the off-peak service. And if we do have an interim solution for more buses, I think we have to continually look at our core network in those peak times and increasing frequency, because I think that will improve the user experience. And I did hear that from the bus drivers, as like, hey, we've got a lot of times, but we don't have enough buses during the peak period. So I think adding these 1,400 hours to fill in the gaps is important, but I think for 2021, 2020, 2021, I'd like to look at that core network again and the peak times and increase in frequency. So that would be sort of my two cents. Counselor Stoner?
I'll add Lotters Lane and the Adventure Center as a stop to one of the routes.
So I realized that as I structured this recommendation, the second one here, the District of Squamish staff to prepare a three-year expansion based on Fair Option 1, so that was basically not including the two or three buses that would be required for options two or three. Didn't actually say how many buses we should include for that year one of the MOU, so that's something that could be discussed now. There will be also opt-in for discussion when we come back, but it's up, obviously, if we get it right, going to first time with it. So we had been planning to include one bus, but if there was interest in it being two, that is also possible.
But I think based on our feedback around Route 5 and what we've provided today, if it needs to be two, then it should come back in our next discussion as two.
And just to speak to that with this list of options here, so for example, for improving core network improvements in the peak, that's going to be one bus at least.
Yeah.
Lotters Lane Adventure Center, if you want peak service, that's going to be a second bus. And then the expanding Route 5, unless, so for example, one option could be you have a core network improvement during the school years, and then over the summer, it drops back down, and that bus is used for, like, there's a couple different ways we could explore that option. But sort of, it's looking like if we wanted to accomplish all of these things, it might be three buses. And so as well, I guess that could be part of that discussion, is do we look to do all of those in 2021, or do we look at prioritizing that and kind of spread it out over the next three years? So.
Was Lotters Lane part of Route 5? Or do you just think it's a stop?
I think that some connectivity between Brennan Park down the Adventure Center would be useful.
And just to speak to that, it is within the transit future plan as a future local service coverage area, so it's definitely something that was identified in the longer-term plan.
Again, generally, you were speaking about consistency, and we're talking about billing and fares, and it's been easy to understand, and sort of throttling that service and having it change at different seasons. Something I contemplated when I looked at the quest of buses, well, maybe it could be a little less in the summer, we can relocate, shuffle, but I think that to get that opt-in of that ridership, which meets our end goals, that's what we're using as a metric right now, that consistency is very important. So I'd be more inclined to go for a phased approach that were consistent, and then we're able to add a layer, rather than to like, adjust it throughout the season, so maybe self-parks aside. I'd like to see consistency across the network as one of the main goals. It's really hard to, for the public, to interpret it, to remember patterns, and to know what the gaps are at whatever time of year is, and be as consistent as possible. I think that's, could be my initial.
Okay, I think we're good. Do you need a motion to any of that? That was just general direction. Some options to be played, I think, huh?
So we do have these recommendations here. The first one, which is.
Okay, someone needs to move the first bullet point. Moved by Counselor Frin, seconded by Counselor Harper. All those in favor? Both motion carries.
The second one?
The second we did, right?
We discussed, we haven't, there's been no motion, but maybe we can.
We did the motion on the fair one, we did option one.
Yes, sorry, this was how to prepare the MOU coming back, but we may not have still needed a motion on that.
Yeah, this was almost like, it was almost preparing for alternative options and what else, right?
Yeah. So we're good on Route 2? Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Okay, let's do a five-minute break, and then we'll talk before the bylaw. We're back in clean hold, and we're on to item 5, which is District Squamish Officer Delegation Bylaw. Turnover, Ms. Arthur.
Thank you, Mary Elliott. Robin Arthur is General Manager, Corporate Services. I'm here today to present a redraft of the Officer Delegation Bylaw, number is 2661. This bylaw, it sort of goes hand in hand with the bylaw that Ms. McJanet presented a couple weeks ago, where it includes delegated authorities. And as a result of some shifting around of delegations, it's required us to. some shifting around of delegations, it's required us to bring forward an updated bylaw as well. Also, there's been some changes coming out of court cases that required us to expand some of the language that we had in our delegation bylaw, because what we previously had created some uncertainty and some ambiguity and vagueness in the language, and courts don't like that. So we've had to firm it up. There's just a couple of slides here. This is not a big bylaw. Officers, a little bit of just-in-time learning. Officers for municipality, local government are created through the Community Charter, Section 147, 148, and 149. The Charter requires local governments to adopt, appoint a corporate officer to oversee the corporate administration for the local government. That's things such as records-keeping, council meeting function, elections, administration. Also, the Charter requires that a financial officer be appointed to oversee the financial operations of the corporation, which includes collection of taxes and revenues, borrowing, payments accounts, and other fiscal responsibilities, investments, everything. And the appointment of a chief administrative officer, a CAO, is not mandatory like a CO or CFO, but almost all local governments will make that appointment to ensure that council's strategic goals and priorities are being carried out in the day-to-day operation of the organization, is somebody to manage the organization. So it is a requirement of the Charter that if council appoints a CAO, their duties and administrative function has to be provided for in a bylaw. And in our case, it's the Officer Delegation Bylaw. So delegation of authority. Council's got the authority through the various legislation to, it's not just the Charter, the Local Government Act, it could be the Land Title Act or the Land Act, and the Motor Vehicle Act, to delegate some of its more administrative decision-making powers to staff. The Officer Delegation Bylaw establishes delegations of authority not already delegated within another bylaw. For example, the Land Development Procedures Bylaw, the Traffic Bylaw, subdivision of Land Control, we have other bylaws that delegate authorities. These are for outliers. Those are just some of the examples. So this bylaw sort of crowds them. New to bylaw 2661 over 2154, which is the previous bylaw, is expanded authority for the CAO as far as leases and licenses go. So the previous Officer Delegation Bylaw was amended several times to acknowledge that, you know, council puts into place a policy around the land use. And that, there was one year, and this was, I'm not sure if it was last term or the one before, but our real estate manager in one year had 70 trips to council for leases and licenses. And so that council today thought, you know, some of these really minor ones, we should be delegating to the CAO. And so that's what happened. We have approximately 96 leases and licenses right now, or some form of land agreement, encroachment agreements, rates of way, that type of thing. And some of these are long-term and ongoing, and some are just very short-term and temporary. The bulk of them are shorter-term and with not-for-profits. So things like food vendors or homeless shelters, that kind of thing. So the intent of the delegation takes into account and considers that if the use aligns with council's established policy, so the zoning bylaw, then there should be no issue in staff negotiating the terms with the tenant. So the district has a statutory requirement to obtain fair market value for leases with businesses. So we don't make a huge profit, we're really not supposed to be in that business, but we're not supposed to provide assistance to business by creating a lease that's undervalued. That, of course, that's not the case, and there's a lot more leniency that can be had with not-for-profits. And we do have, through policy, established not-for-profit rates. And that was established by council. So where there needs to be a change in use through rezoning, or, you know, temporary use permit, sometimes we've had DPPs, it's council's authority to consider the tenant through that change in use. And once the change in use is determined, if it's a positive thing, then staff can go away and negotiate the lease, the lease, and this council's established land use. For larger-scale leases, such as there was the Ropes Course, or we've got some at the airport, council will be asked to weigh in and approve. So we've established a new threshold. Previously, it was $10,000. We found that with inflation and some, I guess, the market value of some of these leases, the thresholds had to be raised. So we've raised it to $20,000 from $10,000 for a five-year term. This only affects, brings into the CAO's realm, an additional five leases and licenses. So it's not like all of a sudden we're doubling the number that she's going to be approving. What is new, though, is we're proposing that for extremely short-term licenses, you know, really temporary and under $2,000 in value, that these be delegated to the real estate manager instead of the CAO. And so these would be things like a park event or a street vendor, food vendor. Because those are established, I think, in the Peas and Chargers bylaw of $1,000.
Should we see a question for your doctor? Do you want to take it? How long, similar to earlier, when we were talking about our, the staff or, so council budget for travel, how long was the, was it at 10? Is this something that's been many years of 10? Because it's a doubling, which I know only brings in five, but I'm curious.
I would say less than six years, maybe. We only, it's fairly newly established in the history of the district, you know. I don't know if, I think Mayor Elliott would be the one to, did it come in in your term, last term? Because if not, then it was, it was when Mayor Kirkman was...
This delegation of leases?
Yes.
I think it was prior to...
Okay, so then it was in the 2011 council.
No, no, a specific issue with the amount proposed there. I'm just curious.
Another thing that's new in this bylaw is a requirement, a new requirement per language around termination of statutory officers, so, other than the CAO. So before, it was laid out in the legislation, it still is, but there's been a requirement to add it to our delegation bylaw. And it talks about how the CAO would go around, go about terminating the corporate officer, the financial officer. No plans to do so.
Did you have a motion to pass?
I did, just keep it back, one second. Sorry, and actually, the slide that you, that I just had you go back and start moving in the goodie. So I'm curious about agreements, termination of agreements, things like the most ambiguous.
Yep, but with the value of $20,000 or five years. So we have service agreements, for example, with people like the Arts Council, Skoomish, search and rescue.
Right. Okay, so that's what's captured here as examples.
That's right. Right. And then we have some that are very large in nature, such as Sea to Sky Community Services for Provision of the Youth Center, and of course, that would come to council.
Councilor Dania?
Just wondering, so you mentioned that according to our policies, so the bylaws would constrain these, but, you know, what about the OCP and our strategic plan? Do those have any bearing on these delegations? Or how is that?
I think that it would be incumbent upon us, we would be required, if council was to delegate their decision-making authority from those bylaws, they would have to be included in this. So you can't delegate through a policy. Do you have a specific thing that you're thinking about?
Well, just, you know, I, I'm not sure that council should be voting all the time on $2,000 or some $2,000 temporary licenses. But at the same time, I do feel that our strategic plan, the OCP, should be, regardless of who's making these decisions, be essentially constraining those decisions. And so I'm just trying to reconcile these two things.
I guess, how is the OCP and the strategic plan reflected in this bylaw to guide the CAO's delegated decision-making? So are you talking about if, well, right now, it seems like it's just up to the CAO's discretion. What Council Peddyl is saying is that there's an OCP, a strategic plan, and do we need to capture that in the bylaw?
No, I wouldn't think so. I think that when council and CAO are setting the annual objectives or the CAO's objectives, that that's where it would be captured as far as her decision-making priorities go, or philosophies. For example, an agreement, an application comes forth for some heavy polluter to license in the park and to do something. I doubt that would get approved based on the strategic plan and the council's philosophies and the policies within the OCP around climate change priorities and those types of things. So is that what you mean?
Well, yeah, to take that, and so for whatever reason, say, our CAO decided to approve this giant polluter, would we have any recourse as a council, or, you know, we've delegated that?
Nope, we don't. So that's, that's one thing, is the previous bylaw, you bring up a good point. So the previous bylaw had some language around reconsideration by council. And about four years ago, there was a ruling that once council's delegated their authority, they can't pull it back and start reconsidering it, and say, well, we're just kidding, we want to be reconsidered. So once it's delegated, it's delegated. I think it would become pretty obvious pretty fast if the CAO proves something that council didn't like. Council would be made aware by the public? Yeah, and that's right. And that's right. So the OCP is a bylaw of council, and so our decisions as staff must be consistent with the OCP.
So section eight, right, which is the delegation of authority? Council Delegates to the mayor in a position set out in the state of the state, that should follow the power duties and functions of council as listed in Schedule A, subject to any...
Oh, that's the old one. So that's 2661 is the new one.
So do we have, so that was, I'm trying to find where there's a similar place where you can put that, subject to any limitations on that delegated authority. That would seem to be opening to, say, they'll make decisions based on our OCP.
We could put...
Using their best judgment according to the OCP and...
So in the, in the standard clauses at the beginning, in the preliminary clause, we could put philosophical language. But you, that is more, that kind of a policy statement doesn't, it isn't something that's directed for his bylaw. I don't know how to articulate that very well. But we can absolutely put it at the top so that it's an overarching credo of the bylaw and the purpose of the bylaw. So the delegated authority is such that staff will carry out councils.
So it could take something, whereas council wishes to delegate to its officers and authorize designated powers, duties, and functions under the Community Charter and the Local Government Act in line with its existing OCP and strategic plan?
Yep.
Well, I guess that sort of answers what I was going to say. And I don't have them in front of me, but what we're delegating to these three people, whose powers contain in three sections of the Local Government Act. And so without that in front of me, but I'd be surprised if it said you could do anything you want in those sections.
It doesn't. But there is further, there's other delegation in this bylaw that essentially... So the other thing that's in here is there's delegation to the Director of Community Planning for agency referrals. So where land use and OCP aligns on crown land, we get plethora of referrals all the time for comment. And the comment is, does it align? Does land use align with what municipality, you know, has, it has in place? So if we zoned almost all of our crown land because of this, so it might be R S 1 or something, and if somebody was to come along and say, I want to put a mine where it's zoned R S 1, the comment back would be, sorry, no, you have to go through zoning, you're, and it's not zoned. It's, those things are, agency referrals are also delegated. So there are delegations from the province that are legislated to be commented on by council, but there's a huge number that come to staff all the time. Taxi licensing is one of them. And before, it just used to say agency referrals, the bylaw, but now, again, a court has determined that that was too vague. Like, which ones are they? How do you decide? And so we've made a list. And the funny thing is, is years and years ago, the court said, get away from the list. You should, you know, not be so prescriptive, because if it's not in the list, you can't do it. And so everybody did that. Now the courts have come back and said, no, make a list. So I can...
So if someone came forward and they wanted to help water plants, is that a crown that's stuck as water?
Yes, that's a referral. That's something that they currently comment on. So if it's zoned, and if it's in an area that it can be done, like the business board, then it goes to Jonas, and he comments.
Have we banned water bothering?
There is OCP, sorry, through the chair, there's OCP policy to that effect. I'm not sure how detailed that is reflected in the zoning bylaw, hence the need to rewrite the zoning bylaw.
Please note.
But his comment might be, no. Like, he might say, this doesn't align with our community vision, you know.
Well, I think to Council Peddyl's point, why you would put that in the pre- level is that we delegate these authorities to the Community Charter and the Local Government Act, but also in line with our OCP and council's strategic plan.
With the, I understand we're delegating, so to save workloads, some of the stuff's pretty, you know, just the course of doing business for the district. But where something runs up against, like, where does council come in to sort of supporting staff in that, where something is in an area where it feels, oh, I'm not actually sure, I maybe need to check in? What's the mechanism for that? I know it's not really like the council's getting recourse and wondering what we're looking at there, but say, say that same referral, just to use, so it might be needed. Yes, using that, using that example, and the officer that it went to, Jonas is like, oh, it doesn't quite fit, but it doesn't quite enough fit, and we check in. How is that handled, or is that...
If it's something that doesn't quite fit, he would bring it to community, the whole, and do a check-in. That would be my... That would be my
Is that one of the processes we have?
And with that, Mayor Elliott, I might, anytime staff get it, they also know to come to me and I provide that additional, or the CAO provides that additional plan. And I'm more cautious than not in terms of applying OCP plans to decisions.
Any other questions? Any other slides?
Yep, just two more. So we've taken servicing agreements out of this and put it in the Land Development Procedures bylaw. Again, the agency referrals. We've moved liquor licensing referrals to accompany the cannabis referrals into the Land Development Procedures. They've made an officer and delegation bylaw. And that's about it. So next steps, it says bring forward. On the report, it said bring forward to the next regular council meeting. I understand that Ms. McJanet won't be ready to go until legal second. So it's actually one goal hand in hand.
So the resolution is bring forward to legal second. Any other questions? If not, someone should move it on that point. Council Petto.
I'll move it.
Moved by Council Petto, seconded by Council French. Any discussion? Council Petto.
Well, I'll say I'll move it because I do think it's important that we look at delegating as much as possible. But I do feel that there's also an opportunity for us to enhance some of our policy. And so I hope to do that over the next three and a half years.
My question is, did we move it with that change in the whereas clause?
Yeah, well, yes, Mayor Elliott, we will bring it forward with the amendment to the whereas clause.
Okay. I think it's important that we always revisit our delegations. I think as we grow as a community, we have to understand where that threshold is. And the busier we are, the bigger we are, that threshold should naturally change over time. So I'm happy to support this. Call a question, all in favor? Close, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sarpe. Counsel, so, Ms. Sarpe, with time, and we have a special meeting. Do I have to start that by a certain
It's my understanding that there should be just a motion to close?
Yes.
Is it just a motion to
It's just a motion to close. All right, so it's probably
So we can keep going.
Okay. So counsel, let's return to our LMLGA discussion. Taking care of Council Anderson, taking care of the one that I was going to bring forward. So Council French. So we've gotten one from Council French, where it's still bicycles and tricycles, parts for bicycles and tricycles. Love tricycles. Do I know if someone are communicating with the tricycles?
What about motorcycles?
Don't be difficult.
These are all provincial sales taxes, yeah.
I'm going to excuse myself for this.
Okay.
Do you want to give a really clear reason for the minutes?
I'd like to, we're discussing taxation on bicycles and that's also something that I directly deal with. So I'm just going to excuse myself for, I just want to leave you guys to discuss.
All right, Peggy.
I'm going to get my cell phone so I can do something productive while I'm loitering in the lobby.
But basically what we're asking for is for the province to wait, exempt electrified schools that are pedal assisted from P S D tax. So counsel, any suggestions for wording here? Council Petto.
I think I heard some informal discussion earlier about why pedal assist needed to be in there. And I had that question, we could understand.
It sets out an important distinction between vehicle or
Scooters.
Scooters that have pedals. It's really about the size of an engine that's connected to the frame. And that is very specific to what we would normally know as a traditional bicycle frame, as opposed to a scooter, minibike, something along those lines.
You may have seen them, only have them around town, their scooters. And there are wheels attached in case you need to do a little regeneration. But they're, they're motorized. So we're not asking to exempt those, we're asking to the traditional bicycles. Does that help?
Can I ask a follow-up? I guess, why, why would we put that restriction? I mean, why not incentivize all electric vehicles?
Very good question. I don't know the answer to it.
One possibility is that even Whistler right now is looking at their e-bike policy on their own bike trips. And so in the, in the spirit of not complicating our resolutions is to go, so those different uses can be controversial in terms of what people want to see on those bike lanes, that sort of thing. So I'm imagining this is an effort to go for one form, not multiples, which may cause some controversy. That's my guess. Counsel, Stoner, can I see your name? Any other
If anybody has any thoughts on reducing this to two whereas clauses instead of three?
It doesn't have to be two.
Well, they say, oops, sorry, they suggest.
It's a suggestion. And I've seen some of ten and they get passed, so.
I would almost just recommend taking up the third whereas clause.
About the cost?
Yeah. It is definitely a lot of factors.
Very open to that.
So I better can find where the gap is in the existing policy.
Okay, so we'll strike that. So moved by Council French to put this resolution forward. Seconded by Counsel Stoner. Any further discussion? Call a question, all in favor? Motion carries. Can we get Counsel Herford back in? Okay. Money's back. Counsel Stoner, you can speak to the search and rescue. We lost Counsel Herford, apparently. Yes.
All right. As discussed last week, and we'll be able to bring forward a resolution around finding a sustainable funding model for V C Search and Rescue. There have been dubious resolutions to this matter from U V C M. I captured some of them on this paper as early back as 2009. I missed one that was also endorsed in 2013. And the most recent one in 2015. The one in 2015 did a response. And there was some budget allocated in 2016, $10 million of one-time funding to help kind of fill a gap when they said they were in top to V C Search and Rescue Association on a more long-term funding model. As of 2019, that $10 million has been completely allocated and there's nothing in the existing budget from the province for V C Search and Rescue. And so craft is the language. I'm happy to take any suggestions on changing that language. Do you want me to read it?
Just therefore be it resolved?
So yeah, therefore be it resolved that the Union of V C Municipalities position the province to work with V C Search and Rescue Association to identify and implement a sustainable funding model.
The previous resolutions went to liberal government. So first time it's going to the Indian Party government. And they acknowledged that they didn't have the budget. I don't have any changes on this one. Any others have suggestions?
I do take Counsel Reese's point from last week. I have yet to reach out to the New Hampshire municipalities. I'm happy to do so tomorrow and see if I can get further support.
All right. Let's see, who else, Counsel Herford?
I was just thinking about a way to go, to your point earlier about going deeper into like a specific person, a specific ask. And I appreciate this is vague enough to capture the, what we're trying to do. Is there a way to, I don't have the specific suggestion to the wording, but is this, is this specific enough that it's going to get to where we want to go? I, it feels more like casting a wide net than a specific budget ask or a, or some sort of new structure of funding commitment or something like that?
I intentionally kept it broad because there are so many different agencies that are responsible or actually working with V C Search and Rescue Association. Like part of it comes from fire and part of it comes from emergency management V C. And so I was cautious about bringing in a specific agency within the province. So I'm hesitant that they have to sort themselves out.
Okay, so that's, that's, I just wanted to make sure I was contemplating it as well.
So counsel, that we take the sustainable funding model for V C Search and Rescue to LMLGA, moved by Counsel Stoner, seconded by Counsel Reese. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Our last one, late addition. Counsel Petto. You want to set a context for this?
Sure, so we had a discussion about it. I've been thinking about these resolutions for a little bit. And then I came across an article, Kingston had just passed Kingston, Ontario, a resolution acknowledging the climate perversion. And so it made me think of Vancouver and so on. They passed their resolution in January. I reached out to the Vancouver councillor that wrote their resolution, which passed unanimously, read through it and thought that it would be a good starting point. It was very Vancouver-focused, but there was also a number of sections which have broader implications. So Christine Boyle in Vancouver was enthusiastic about the idea about pursuing this at LMLGA. So I, I took a, I just got the final response from her, I think, yesterday. And so I was rushing to try and move forward with this. So I'm open to feedback. The actual Vancouver resolution is attached at the end. And I took out all the whereas's and put it in a sort of a background, which I think you're allowed to do under the LMLGA and tried to condense the whereas's. And, sorry, this, this newer draft had some cutting and paste errors. The first one is the one for discussion.
So, one, I think that it would be stronger if it actually had more whereas context. And two, I think we need to go beyond LMLGA. I think this is, it's a provincial ask. So we're taking it to the area association so that it can go to U V C M. And so it's almost like you want to say that there are communities across the province that recognize the breakdown of the stable climate and sea level. Unless you want to name specific outlets, you could say city Vancouver, District 11, Lowene, passing climate, emergency motion. And that the province should seek to accelerate the efforts. And that the province use regulation rather than subsidization to encourage industries to reduce practices. See what I mean? So it's not the LMLGA. We're trying to elevate it right to the provincial federal level.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. And I sort of assumed that would happen. I guess I, in my mind, was thinking you get it first, pass it the LMLGA and then edit it slightly for you.
The wording doesn't change from LMLGA to U V C M, so it's a
Oh, I'm happy to make these changes.
What about this thing? I mean, the Vancouver motion is very specific, speaks to their need.
I wonder whether we could consider the word industries in under C. It seems to me that this is rather focused, rather, I mean, we're also communities that do planning. We are a society that does things that we shouldn't be doing. I'm uncomfortable with the focus on industries. I personally take the view that we're all in this game. I also think when we think about a changing behavior, you, there's a reference here to regulation and subsidization. There's also enlightenment, education. So the carrot, the stick and enlightenment, these are three ways to modify behavior. But I think it's not only industry's behavior that we need to modify. And we need to recognize their circumstances as well. But it's a general societal targeting, I think, that I would prefer anyway.
Counsel Reese?
Yeah, I tend to agree. I mean, I'm not the expert in this area, but believe that a significant part of climate change and G H G emissions is coming from personal use of automobiles, for example. And the difficulty, I guess, with the way this is written is if you, federal and provincial governments use regulation rather than subsidization to encourage the reduction of the practices driving in urgency. Right now, that might include subsidies to electric vehicles, for example, or electric charging stations, or a whole bunch of things that individuals use that are getting subsidies as opposed to just being regulatory. So, and others will know more than I do about that. But I think, you know, the general intent of it, to me, is, is fine. But I think we do have to work on it a little bit and just change in the three resolves. And you can put one, two, and three, actually. That's the way, doing a whereas is A, B, and C. It's resolve one, two, and three. It's kind of the standard format of drafting. But I think rather than that the LMLGA and its memberships recognize the breakdown, maybe it's just that governments recognize, so it's all levels really of government that are involved in this, recognize the breakdown, et cetera. And constitutes an emergency for not just the lower mainland of V C. It's all over the place. So it's problems British Columbia, or Canada, or, or just constitutes an emergency. And that governments, two, number two, shall accordingly accelerate the efforts, et cetera. And three, you might want to consider how you phrase that. I mean, I tend to agree with Counsel Anderson. But then I think we want to be careful of the effect of that. It's not just industry, but considerable climate change affects everybody. Really, you can't focus on just one sector. And then what is the, what is the effect of getting rid of subsidization in some cases? As I say, you may have a better knowledge of that than I do. Just be cautious about that. And so in C, rather than the LMLGA urge the province and federal governments, just that the provincial and federal governments be urged to whatever it is.
Counsel Petto, one of the things that I wondered is that the resolution clauses from Vancouver are actually quite strong that weren't included. So that council directs staff to establish a remaining carbon budget for corporate and community emissions commensurate with a limiting warning. Commensurate with limiting warnings to one by five V C and report annually on the expenditure. Why won't we ask the province for that as part of the Clean V C Plan? To establish a remaining carbon budget for industrial and community emissions commensurate with limiting warning? Like that's a, that is a, that's an enlightenment to Counsel Anderson's point. That's enlightened to know how much states we have left. And then there are resolutions in C that council directs staff to establish a climate and equity working group to provide guidance and support for the city's efforts to transition off the fossil fuels in ways in ways that prioritizes the most vulnerable to climate impact. So I think that's a powerful statement to say to the province, you need a climate and equity working group to make sure that as we make this transition, we are looking at those most vulnerable to climate impact. So those are two strong resolutions, which I think will support something to focus on province rather than city. I'm not sure why we would lose those unless you have some rationale.
My rationale is simply that I had understood the, got to understand the LMG does not have a lot of resources, so. But if, understanding that we can direct this at the province right away, I think your suggestions make sense.
Yeah, we don't direct work at LMG unless there's some specific lobbying work that they think we need to do. Our resolution should focus on provincial areas. So I'd actually like to preserve those to just change the wording to reflect the province. And to that end, I know that LMG only wanted two whereas clauses, but from the Vancouver motion, there are whereas statement number one, two, three, four, and nine, possibly? And possibly just the first part of six. Like, I think we should take the work that was done in Vancouver, and just, those are all compelling at provincial level. So stating you that time was recording it, just do the whereas, one, two, three, four, six B, like the preamble of the six and six B, and then nine, the key thing. I'm not sure we need nine. That might have been important for Vancouver, it's probably not important for the province.
Yeah, I did edit it, and I, in the background, I added the Canadian cities.
But I agree with my fellow councillors that the therefore be it resolved that you have here in BC places too much on industry and not enough on this provincial action level.
That makes sense to me.
So one question I have for you is if you want to continue to work with councillor Boyle to develop this motion and then bring it forward as a late resolution to LMG? Or have it as a District of Squamish resolution? Or would you like to see it come from city of Vancouver and District of Squamish?
I think reflecting, having gone through a similar process at the chamber, I think it would be stronger if we could bring this sort of with cosponsors. So if that's the approach we can take, I think that would be the preferable one.
So that's the, so we don't have to decide here today if you'd like the time to work this out with councillor Boyle. It's, I'm basically stealing all of her clauses and then making it our own, so that doesn't feel all that genuine. But if that's, I know that you've been in communication with her, and that's something that you could bring back next week at the regular meeting. We could endorse it there and potentially still meet LMG's deadline, but. I know there's this Friday, but I know the chair.
Your friends in high places.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
So, and that gives you just a little more time to, but maybe just to test the waters, councillor. Based on our conversation, is there support at this table? I don't want to say first off, do all this work, if Ray actually doesn't afford it to him.
Yes. Thank you.
Way to go.
May I just comment briefly on an item that I promised I would bring along for today? And that is a resolution or proposed draft resolution on natural resource roads. Now, just outline why I think we should delay on this one, but that we should continue to watch it. First of all, the SLRD may well be the one to take the lead on this. The natural resource roads for the SLRD has been a perennial topic to thoroughly road, which is maintained by forest companies but heavily used by Bridge River Valley residents and tourists. For us here in Squamish, and in fact, that very issue comes up in the presentation today from the Sea Sky Corridor Destination Development Strategy highlights that. And here in Squamish, we are looking towards implementing a community forest. We have several natural resource roads heavily used for recreation that we should be mindful of the policy behind them and how resources are brought to maintain them and regulate them. In 2008, Premier Gordon Campbell had a big policy initiative towards revising or producing a new Natural Resources Roads Act that would accommodate in policy the, how to deal with recreational uses of natural resource roads. And discussion paper was produced with the UBCM. It addresses resource roads as access to communities, high public use areas, road deactivation and public access, and stakeholder communications. These are all still topics today. This discussion paper...
I take it that didn't go anywhere?
No, it didn't. It's still on the shelf, so the point of a resolution would be provincial government, let's pull this off the shelf and deal with it. So it's just sitting there, this is the 2010 discussion paper, and successive governments, Christie Clark and the current government, did not address it. But I think here from Squamish, we should continue to monitor it. For example, the Ring Creek Forest Service Road, if it becomes part of a community forest area, the community forest will be responsible for all of the costs of that road. Also timber harvesting today pays for maintenance of that road. The provincial government has not put a dollar into Ring Creek Forest Service Roads since 1973. And they have no program to do that. So I suggest it's important for us here, but also important for our corridor, and that we should watch what's happening also with the Squamish Valley Recreation Planning Process underway just now. Just keep an eye on how the road issue and the maintenance cost for that upper Squamish Valley road is discussed in that process, and come back to it later.
What does the destination plan say?
The destination plan, under the theme of infrastructure and shared transportation options, refers to year-round connections. That is, and it really does come from the northerly part of the corridor where the Hurley Road isn't a year-round road because the resource industry doesn't need it year-round. It can't, it doesn't, it's, but other travelers might want to. So there's no other way to pay for that maintenance other than through the resource companies. This is the challenge, there's no policy guiding that. And so the reference here is to work with the provincial government to improve transportation and access management to the Bridge River or the Manquam or the Ring Creek, develop the, yeah. So what is missing is a reference to this policy document that's sitting on the shelf in Victoria, the Natural Resources Roads Act that was never implemented.
Possibly you are one of 20 people that know this. Just saying. I don't, I don't mean to belittle that at all, it's just that...
It will be for...
I'm imagining the people working on the destination plan do not know that that falls.
Well, I will predict that for my fellow councillors that are on the board of the Community Forest Project, this will be a very, very important issue that you'll be addressing, and we'll learn more as you go. Because the costs of maintaining the roads within our community forests, that's going to be now their responsibility. No longer BC Timber Sales, just Squamish Community Forests. So these issues will be buried.
Everywhere.
That was a good piece of background. Of all that, though, I felt more compelled to act, and I wasn't that, that we should wait right now. Piece was missing from your argument. Do you want to expand on why we should wait and not take something forward, given its importance?
For one thing, there are other actors concerned with it, perhaps the SLRD Board, and in the past, Reserve Municipal in Worcester has taken this to the UBCM. That's probably quite a few years ago. We can, in the meantime, so I'm suggesting maybe we won't, I haven't got anything prepared for the local government, but we could perhaps revisit the conversation towards preparing something or discussing with other local governments for the UBCM, like the late deadline.
So Doug and I could take the SLRD potentially for a discussion there?
Well, perhaps that is, that is something we could do. If we could ask our SLRD delegates to raise this issue there, see what they think, see if they're also thinking about something. Of course, it's Debbie de Mer, this issue's been very close to her.
She's no longer on the board.
She's no longer on the board, yes, but perhaps to her successor.
Councillor Petco?
Well, somewhat to councillor Anderson's point, and then to my comment earlier in the day, that's something I might like to bring back next year. I'm wondering, when we talk about committees and have that discussion, if it's worthwhile talking about, should we meet as a group quarterly to talk about, you know, what stuff we want to bring to LMG, UBCM the following year? So it's not sort of just before, but kind of formally checking in a few times a year.
One of the things that staff does is they listen for us to say things like, ooh, that would be a good resolution. And so this year, there was nothing on the books to bring back. But if you just say that in a meeting, staff are going to capture that, and then it comes back to us at this time to consider. So rather than at a meeting, if you, if you speak to it, our staff will, will bring it back to us in the spring. If that gives you some peace of mind, because I know it's hard to keep track of them all. But that being said, certainly councillor Rice and I can take the rural roads funding or resource roads funding to SLRD to consider it back.
I already link to this report.
Great. And if they don't take it up, then we should consider a motion to UBCM, councillor Anderson? Because like councillor Herford, why wait if we think that there's anything to take it forward? So happy to go through the SLRD, but happy for also for this council report as well. Or councillor French, councillor?
Yeah, I'm, I agree, don't want to wait. I think this is pressing enough for our community. And wonder if at this table, does this warrant a recommendation from council to our SLRD representatives to formalize that we're relying on you to do that?
Do you want to respond to that, councillor?
Yeah, I don't think so. We'll get the note from councillor Anderson, and we can take it forward. I mean, the only comment, I mean, I don't want to prejudge it. Roads are always a big subject at the SLRD table. Focusing on things like Highway 99 and Highway 40. Hurley is there, certainly, and it's not year-round as everybody knows, but we've had more difficulty with access along the line. There's supposed to be year-round, and so tends to sometimes get pushed down the table. But nevertheless, we can bring this up again. Because there has been, in the past, with some of the work that's been done, where other directors of the SLRD, they have finally started to get results on the highways, so maybe the time is right.
Well, it was councillor Herford, and then back to you, councillor Anderson?
I was just wondering if, I was using more on if an endorsement of, or some drafts proposal around the language is stronger for you to take to SLRD? And it is bigger than the Hurley, and Hurley's probably the stickiest subject where you'd find in the SLRD about this particular piece. But this is a, with the implications across the province, we need, I mean, everywhere. Resources build our back roads network more or less, and it's now, you know, it's been used by the public. So I think there'd be a lot of support for this, and it's not a simple thing, but should we draft something for so that District of Squamish can be on the list, or you? What I'm hearing is that you're going to do it to SLRD, and then we can tap on that, rather than we do it in areas.
Well, the Hurley is in the vision of this, and when you start talking about roads like that, and at the moment, even the Ring Creek Road, so.
The Ring Creek EBSR is the crossroad, not the, not the Dunlop Road that goes to the park, right?
Yes, I would consider it to be right up to the park by the...
That's MOT. I'm pretty sure it's MOT, maintains it to the park, and Ring Creek Forest Service Road goes to...
Not since the cross.
It's a complex issue, so councillor, happy to take it forward to the SLRD. Do you have the old motions that went to UBCM?
I can certainly track those down. I just have a final suggestion. When we met with Emily Jordan Sturdy a few weeks ago, he had a suggestion that we invite Sea Sky District Manager Dave Southam, perhaps to a committee of the whole meeting, to outline what he's doing with the Shannon Forest Service Road. He has a special initiative there that he recommended that we might want to learn about. And then we can ask directly and become very well informed through Dave Southam on his perspective.
It is on my list, it's got Dave Southam on the agenda, and Emily Sturdy was going to follow up with him directly so that I wasn't pulled a college here. So thank you for that suggestion. Okay, motion to close. Moved by councillor Herford, seconded by councillor Stoner, all in favor, both motion carries.